I'd like to call this meeting the Clay County Commission to Order. We will begin with our invocation. Teresa, if you'd like to, please lead us in prayer.
Heavenly Father, I ask you to bless our commissioners with favor, grace, wisdom, and insight. Lead and guide them in the way they should go to make Clay County, Missouri, a great place to live, learn, work, and play. Strengthen them as they lead with vision and virtue. I thank you for your provisions, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte?
Here.
Commissioner Withington?
Here.
Commissioner Lawson?
Here.
Commissioner Wagner?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Here.
With that, we will move on to approval of the agenda. Commissioner Johnson?
Move to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion has been made for approval of this evening's agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. With that, that moves us to public comments. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the commission on any subjects? Seeing none. That moves us to our consent agenda. Administrator?
The consent agenda allows the commission to act upon items considered to be routine and approved in one motion. These may include items that have been reviewed by the commission in a prior session. There will be no separate discussion unless the commissioner requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. There are five items on the consent agenda this evening. First is Resolution 2025-164 approving invoice payments for Clay County from the period of May 10th through May 16th. There are a total of 547 invoices in the amount of $1,054,932.66. Resolution 2025-169 is approving a request to operate the farmers market at Smithville Lake for the 2025 season and the fee structure. Resolution 2025-166 is approving an agreement with Arctic Glacier USA Incorporated for resale of bagged ice. Resolution 2025-167 is approving an agreement with Waste Corp. Pumps LLC for a vacuum pump trailer for the parks. And Resolution 2025-170 is approving an agreement with Infinity Sign Systems for the Clay County Parks Department.
Commissioner Johnson?
Move to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Motion has been made for the approval of this evening's consent agenda. Discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. That brings us to our regular agenda. We have two items on this evening's regular agenda. The first is 2025-168. Administrator?
Resolution 2025-168 is a request for waiver of fees, interest, penalties, and taxes due to a county error by Michelle Blake. And Director of Administrative Services, Deanna Jacobs, is here to provide information to the commission.
Please proceed.
Good evening. Deanna Jacobs, Administrative Services Director. This is a request for waiver. The initial request indicated a request for $264.22. However, the math really averages out or works out to $277.10. So that's the amount that's in question. Ms. Blake paid her 22 taxes and then she moved from Clay County in April of 2023. She received a tax bill in December of 2023 and went to Douglas County, Kansas, and paid her taxes in 2023, December 26th of 2023, to Kansas. Kansas, you pay ahead. Missouri, you pay behind. So she thought she was paying the Clay County taxes when she paid taxes in December, December 26th of '23. She thought everything was fine until she got a delinquent bill from Clay County in April of 2024 that told her that taxes were delinquent here and they had risen to $1,065.22. She responded at that time and paid the original amount of $788.12. That was applied to her bill pro rata, so it left some of the principal interest and penalty. She is asking for the commission to waive the penalty and interest because of an honest mistake.
Are there any questions for the...? Are there any questions? Seeing none?
We made attempts to reach her and to my knowledge, we were unable to get ahold of her. They left a message.
Yeah, you kind of jumped ahead of me there, Commissioner. I was about to ask if the applicant was present. Thank you for kind of getting ahead of me there a little bit, but... So the applicant is not present this evening?
Not to my knowledge. We left messages and we did not hear back.
Okay, very good. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay. If there's no one else interested in speaking... Commissioner Wagner, please go ahead.
Thank you. Well, since nature impores a vacuum and so do I, I will just note that the receipt that we've received that's in this packet is marked Kansas Department of Revenue. It should be very clear that nothing was paid to Clay County. And I just go off of Ms. Jacobs's final comment in her report to us. It was an honest mistake, but in this case, it requires that it's a Clay County mistake, which is not the case here. So I'll just leave it at that.
Further comments? Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, just in case the applicant is... I don't know if applicant's the right word, but if she's watching here, she's watching. This is very unfortunate, and I hate this when people make honest mistakes and try to do the right thing, trying to pay their taxes, and yet a mistake was made and she gets penalized for that. Unfortunately, as Commissioner Wagner kind of indicated, our hands are tied with this. If it's not a mistake on the side of the county, then state law doesn't really allow us to waive these kinds of things. So because this was a mistake, as honest as it was, but a mistake on the side of the taxpayer, we don't really have the authority to overrule that. So with that, I'm going to move to approve 2025-168 with the box marked "denied."
Motion has been made for the approval of 2025-168 with a box indicating "denied" marked. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
That moves us to our second item on the regular agenda, and that is 2025-165. Administrator?
Resolution 2025-165 is approving invoice payments for the Clay County Prosecutor's Office from May 10th through May 16th. There are 23 invoices totaling $5,436.8.
Commissioner Johnson? Oh, I'm sorry. You've been getting moved over there automatically now to not.
Move to approve 2025-165.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2025-165. Discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Recuse myself, please.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion passes, five in favor, one recusal.
Thank you. That concludes our regular agenda this evening. Next on the agenda, we have one issue under discussion items. Administrator?
Thank you. Yes, I think it's been several weeks ago, Commissioner Withington had asked that the Parks Director come and talk about what is the process with regard to our waitlist for boat slips at Smithville Lake. So I'd like to introduce Parks Director Davis, who will provide some information to the commission and talk about what that process looks like.
Please proceed, Mr. Director.
John Davis, Parks Director. Well, it didn't turn out too well on the presentation for some reason. Just go over a little bit of background of what we have. Unfortunately, the slide is not looking like it's supposed to. Camp Branch Marina, we have four docks that are leasable. There's 212 of those slips. They vary in ranges of size to smaller boats to bigger yachts. I'll say there's 212. They're all rented as of today. Potential revenue or total revenue per that dock system is about $402,896. These are all covered docks. If you look at the picture in the middle, and I do apologize for the slide, you know, it starts from your left is A, and then B, and then the middle dock system is where rental boats are stored. Then you have C and D dock. D dock is the biggest one. That is where we keep our lease rental yacht or larger boats are leased, and they vary from various sizes and square footage. Paradise Point's our largest marina. That's on the littler side. There's A through H dock. A through G dock are covered docks. If you start from the H dock will be on your left, and that isn't the only uncovered dock we have. There's 212, no, excuse me, 267 slips at Paradise Point Marina. Revenue from this one is about $517,491 a year. The short, if you, like I say, if you go H dock is the uncovered dock, and if you work your way to the right, that's G dock, and then F dock is a larger boat dock. That's where the bigger yacht boats are. You can keep those. The middle is where the restaurant is and our courtesy parking for restaurants and restaurants and all that for general public. And then the rest to the right are smaller boat docks. Sailboat Cove, as it implies, is sailboat only. The dock system is, holds 62 sailboats, about $116,000... $116,400 in revenue from that dock alone. The total for all three docks is $1,036,391. This also includes mooring balls. If you don't know what a mooring ball is, that is just a big round float that's out in the middle of that cove, and you can hook your... Usually sailboaters will hook their boat to that and go get the rowboat, which we provide, and they row out to their boat, and it's a cheaper method. And then dry sail is where you can keep your trailer or your sailboat. That is, you know, since sailboats are a little bit difficult to keep on the road, they like to keep them on that in the dry sail area. Marina's around us. Compared to Jackson County, got information on their waiting list because that's the big topic of the day, but you know, price-wise, we're pretty compatible. You know, Blue Springs Lake, their waiting list is, you know, they've got 250 slips. There's over 100 on their waiting list. Their wait time is about 20 years is what I was told. They're all covered. Those are covered docks at Blue Springs. Longview's 250, again, over 100 on the waiting list with them and about a 20-year wait limit is what they're telling me. They only have about one to two openings a year is what they've said. Lake Jacomo's different. That is an uncovered dock system, similar to RH dock or a sailboat, but they're only allowed to keep their boats there from April 1st to November 30th. Another neighboring county is Wyandotte that has boats, boat slips, but they were hit by the tornado last year, so they lost quite a bit of them, so I don't have an exact number. They only have pontoon slips. That's all they will rent on that Wyandotte County lake. There's 340 people on their waiting list, and they're serving people clear back to January of '15. And like I said, there, you can only keep your boat on their dock from March 1st to April or to November 30th. Surrounding storage units, compatible, were about to the same price as if you would store your boat on our docks compared to the surrounding storage units around Smithville Lake. Our waiting list procedures after contracts are all renewed and relocations are done. So if you are a current slip holder and you don't like the slip you're in and you want to relocate to another slip, you are given a form and you can relocate if that's a slip is available. So we conduct renewals, relocations, we determine available slips, then we go on to the waiting list after all the relocations are done. We contact names on in numerical order. There's 24 hours to respond to staff's phone calls and emails. If you do not respond to the list, then, or you decline a slip, or you ask to be removed, then you are removed from the list. You're offered, they are offered first choice available. And again, if you decline that slip, then you are off the list. And then we begin contacting the next name on the list. Historical information, in 2021, it was determined we had an unmanageable number of people on the waiting list. It was 869 people. So in 2021, for Camp Branch and Paradise Point Marina, we went through the list, contacted people, and since then, we had 92 bad contact information. They were removed from the list. That's, they gave us a bad email. They gave us a bad phone number, didn't answer the phone, whatever. 162 asked to be removed, 138 declined the slip that was offered to them, and 384 have accepted the slips. As of today, we're sitting on 93 people on the list. And the oldest date on that list is about a request from 2021 when we closed the list because we did close the list in 2021 to get it manageable. Our goal is to maintain a waiting list not to exceed 100 people. And when we currently are at 93, when we get down to 30, we would open the list back up. So... Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much for that report. I don't think anybody who's been around the county in 2021 or prior to can mistake the idea that we are in a better position. Are we perfect? No. But we are in a much better position. Thank you for the work that you've done to bring us into a better place to serve our constituents. Commissioner Withington, I believe you're seeking recognition?
Yeah, hey, thank you for, thank you for this presentation. Have we looked at expanding capacity, like adding more docks? Is that feasible or is it possible? Because I know I asked you guys when I first came on if that was a possibility.
There's a possibility, but the traffic at the lake, I don't know if I would recommend it. The traffic at the lake, it's getting busy. You know, I'll remind you, we're doing a master plan this year, so I think a part of that master plan has studies of, you know, contracts and fee schedules and feasibility of projects. So I would wait and to see what that determines.
Just curious, how much would a dock cost?
Rough estimate, if you wanted to do, you know, a smaller boat dock, that's probably about the size of, you know, 40 slips, which would be equivalent to one E dock, you're probably looking at 1.9 million.
1.9.
The structure itself is 1.3. I did get a price on that, but that's not including delivery, electrical wires, water lines, security, labor, and so that's a very rough estimate.
And so I've heard from several citizens complaining about the transparency around the waiting list. Is the waiting list public?
It is not.
Is not?
It's, I mean, you can, most of the requests have been sunshine requests, and we have provided those.
But do you force the citizens to pay for that sunshine request?
They have, yeah.
How much is, how much is it to see where they're at on the waiting list? If they, if somebody requested that, how much would you guys charge?
Let me convert with, how much is the fee? I'm not sure. I want to say 20, but I could be wrong.
Is there any way to make that public? It seems, seems like we could be more transparent around that waiting list. Because a lot of people have said that they're on the list and every year when they call, they've either fallen down on the list or they're just told the exact same thing that they were told the last five years.
Okay.
And I think that's probably where, probably where the biggest hangup is, is around the transparency regarding this. So I would like to see us be more transparent with them so they can see. And I think it's, I think it's crazy that we're charging them 20 bucks to sunshine, go through the sunshine process to just find out where they're at on the waiting list.
Posting it publicly, I would ask our legal counselor, is that okay? Or what his thoughts were, but if that's the will of the commission, but legally, is there a privacy expectation with the waiting list?
Yeah, please go and use your microphone.
So if it's, if it's public and can be sunshineable, then it is. I can't imagine why we couldn't tell someone who called and say where they are on the list at any moment. That seems easy enough to me.
Right, they do.
Okay.
He just said that they have to sunshine.
If you want them.
I'm sorry. The attorney asked if somebody called and said, where am I on the list?
Oh, well, that's what I was asking.
And but, and so if I were, if I were on the list and I called and said, you know, it's new season, where am I on the list? Am I next or I'm 20 down? You do tell the individual that calls where they are.
If you want a physical copy of the list, then that's sunshine. But if you want to know where you're on the list, you know, just call up and they'll tell you. But also, I want to say is we have marina manager and assistant manager, and all calls to be directed to them. So if you call and get one of the seasonal staff and it's like, they're not supposed to be answering because they don't know where the record, that's, we want to keep it consistent and sometimes this is just seasonal staff. So there's probably some little bit of confusion with that.
Do we have a waiting, is the policy for the waiting list, is that public to where people can read the policies? Because I know some of them have shared with me that they don't feel like the policies are actually being followed, like they're being told that they're being followed.
We can post it if that's most certain.
And I think there are some citizens here. Can we hear from them too?
Commissioner, we'll go ahead and get through this part of it, and I'll go ahead and run the meeting if that's okay.
No, it's not okay, Jerry. Get out of here. I'm just kidding with you, Jerry. But I would like to hear from the citizens if that's, if they, if we can.
Commissioner, I will be calling on citizens, but the way we proceed is, the presentation is made, commissioners ask questions and answers.
I understand how, I was making a statement, Jerry, that I would like to hear from the citizens. I wasn't saying I wanted them to come up this very second, so.
I, okay. Then that is the way I've always proceeded, but please, continue with the discussion so we can get to the citizens.
So, okay, that's all I have for you, is I would like to see more transparency around this.
Okay.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yeah, I agree with that 1,000%. I know, we, we got on the waiting list one time and, you know, it was just so long and we just kept the boat at home. But, but it is a wonderful convenience if you can have it up there. The thing I would like to see, I don't see any reason under the sun, unless there's something legal, that that list can't be posted, you know? So people can see, well, now I'm five. Ooh, I moved up to three, you know, and they can, they can kind of see how it progresses, number one. That's my number one wish. The second wish is, I do not understand why, and maybe I'm wrong on this. People who live in Clay County ought to have first shot at that. They pay the taxes to maintain that lake and that boat dock and all of that. So I would very much like to see that the folks that are living in Clay County have first priority. And then, it's just like the chiefs. If you live in Jackson County, you get your first shot at the, at the season tickets. Well, our people should get first shot at that, at all of those. Lastly, my last question is, the, there's, I notice when we go up there, there's those bases for a dock. It, it looks like everybody, somebody pulled all the wood off of, off of a dock and it's just kind of a big metal square, and those are kind of sitting there. I think by the place that had the restaurant is where I saw the most of them. But anyway, they're there. Is that a base that we could finish where we could at least have maybe outdoor docks? Out, you know, that aren't covered?
Let me get back to a picture because I'm not sure.
I don't know if it shows it on that.
The mouse. Are you talking about this area? No. That's part.
Yeah, if that's, if that's just like metal, does that end over to the left?
This is, that's H dock. That is uncovered docks. There's about 27 slips there. So that is leased out.
Those are what?
Those are leased out.
Leased out?
Yes.
Oh, okay. And what about the ones that don't have a top on them?
That's those.
That are just metal?
That's those.
Oh, okay. How do we lease those? Just, you know, I mean, if, if your, if your boat's in, I'm talking about that end.
It's right here.
If the boats are in there, is there a dock alongside of it that they can walk on to get?
Yeah, there's a walkway.
I didn't, I didn't see that on some of those, but...
Should. It's not a very wide walkway.
Okay. And I never see boats there.
They're leased. I mean, nothing says you have to keep your boat there.
Sure, 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 sure. But they pay for it, so.
They pay for it, and they may just leave it there in the weekend when they're there. But like I say, they're leased.
Oh, okay, okay. All right. They look like just unfinished.
You know, sometimes it does get a lot of rough water because that's outside the dock, so a lot of them don't like to keep the boats there all the time.
Okay, all right. That's all I got.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you. Thanks, John. That was very helpful and informative. Appreciate your work on it. And so I'm going to ask a few questions if you don't know. It's perfectly okay. First one is just, to what extent do the docks pay for themselves with the slip fees? Do we have any sense of that?
Hold on, I've got my sheet.
Part of the reason I'm asking, by the way, is Commissioner Withington, you know, mentioned the possibility of adding capacity. And so I would just be curious, I suppose, if we were to do that, if we would expect for it to, you know, return and pay for itself.
I think we figured out. I think we figured out if you built a new dock, you would probably, about 18 years is what we, to pay itself off.
We did run a really quick analysis and depending on if it's covered and the size of the docks, I think the largest one would be about an 18-year return on our investment to actually break even on the investment. That's not at present day value, we didn't forecast any of that. If it is a smaller and uncovered, then the cost recovery is a much shorter period of time.
Thank you, yeah. And that covers both the initial building and then as well as the ongoing maintenance costs. Very good, thank you. And when was the last time we added capacity?
Before I started and that's, I've been here 15 years. We had a microburst, I know, right before I arrived and put one dock on top of the other and they rearranged a bunch of stuff, so I, I couldn't tell you.
Thank you, yeah. Well, to Commissioner, you know, Withington's point, obviously if it's been, it sounds like well over 15 years since we've added capacity, obviously there's been a lot of growth in Clay County in that time, a lot of growth in Smithville over that time. So I do think it warrants at least consideration to, to add capacity. And sort of on that front, you know, I'm a big believer in capitalism, supply and demand and all that good stuff. So, you know, one of the ways, if we have an excess of demand is, is to either increase supply by increasing capacity or we could increase prices, which I'm sure the slip owners aren't, aren't overly thrilled at that idea, but, but either of those would, would tend to shorten the list, especially over time. Any consideration to, to the second option?
Yes, and that's when I go back to the master plan. Part of the master plan process hope is do fee analysis and all that and look at where we are after that report comes back to us.
Thank you. I did note that Jackson County seemed to be a little higher, more like eight or $9 per square foot as opposed to six or seven.
And I don't know if they just recently did that, but we were, we've been kind of compatible and they jumped, so. But as I say, a part of the master plan, that's hopefully is fee analysis for the entire park system and that will be a part of it.
Good deal. And then just lastly, on the, the objective part was to keep the list under 100.
Yes.
And so I just want to ask a little bit about that in terms of, so the longest person on the list currently is from March of 2021.
Yes.
So I guess at first consideration, to me, it seems like the objective could be more tied to like the length, the sort of longest length that a person would have to, on, on average, stay on the list, as opposed to like just the length of the list itself. You know, March of 21 is a good long while. I don't know what we would want to get it down to, but, you know, people would probably be happy if it was a lesser amount of time, I would think. So I guess I would just throw that out there as a, as a suggestion around what that objective looks like and going forward. Maybe some consideration given to, to a, a goal about the, the maximum length of time one would expect to have to wait on the list.
We can do what we can. I mean, it's, it's a hot commodity and that list, it'll go back to 869 people like that.
Yeah, no, totally, yeah. I, I don't want that to be the case, certainly, and I'm glad we've made some huge improvements on that. I think one of the ways to help keep the list shorter would be the two options, you know, getting more capacity, more docks and potentially charging, you know, more. Those two things combined would tend to suggest that they would be, you know, help keep the list shorter and, and get people into docks faster. All right, very helpful, thank you. Appreciate the discussion.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just I want to follow up on a couple of points, Commissioner Carpenter, maybe then I'll go to the next commissioner. One would be, is there a formula of some sort that would tell us how many slips are the, the sort of optimum, given the number of, the surface area of the lake? I don't know that there is or isn't, but if we are going to go down this road, I think that might be something we would look into. So I don't necessarily expect an answer to that. Then the other is, of course, that should we go down that road, we will be needing to have some conversations with the Army Corps. I'm sure they will insist.
Yes.
So I guess I don't, if you, if you've got something on that, but I, I raise that just as a future point if we, if we decide to go down this path.
Okay, we'll look into it.
Thank you. Commissioner Withington?
I forgot to ask, are these boat ramps, are docks ADA compliant?
No.
Are we looking to make them ADA compliant?
We are in that process. We have the ramps ordered, they're in progress, process of building them. Camp Branch will be the first. We've budgeted about $200,000 this year for that. We're expecting to get Camp Branch and Paradise Point done this year, fingers crossed, but.
Can I ask why it took so long to get these done? Like, was it just never a priority? Did no one ever ask for them? Because I know we had that one guy contact us.
And he didn't, that was, you know, my first year of directing, so we got on that and Bern and McDonald.
And I appreciate that, that's what I was getting at. I just didn't know why it took so long or whatever, but.
I couldn't answer.
Well, I appreciate you taking care of that because I know that meant a lot to that gentleman and his wife. Thank you.
But Bern and McDonald did draft plans last year and we got it budgeted for this year. So I'd say we're hoping to get Camp Branch and Paradise Point done this year and then we will move to Sailboat Cove next year and get that one done.
And what about lighting at the docks? Have we looked at improving the lighting around the boat ramps and the docks and everything? Because I know a lot of people have complained about that too.
We've put solar lighting down the ramps at Camp Branch. We're checking, we've got, we keep checking the parking lot lights and all that. It's an ongoing thing.
Yeah, and that was, that was another one of the top issues that I keep getting hit up with, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Wagner? Did I, you disappeared. If you'd like to push your button again, we'll give you another.
I'm sure it's not personal.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. John, thanks for being here today and the presentation. I, I will jump off from, jump into the deep end from our colleague Commissioner Nolte's comment, because you can increase the number of slips, you can increase the price, you can't make the lake bigger.
Correct.
Unless you know something I don't. I got a shovel in the car, I could try, but at any rate, my point is that for those who have gone to the Lake of the Ozarks, I have not for many years, and part of the reason is the experience when I get on that lake and the number and the amount of traffic on it. And it does suggest to me that there is a point at which you increase the traffic to the point it is no longer an enjoyable experience for anyone that's on it and you actually degrade the experience. Taking a comment you made a few moments ago, John, just to, I guess, repeat and reiterate, the point of the parks plan that we have funded in this budget is to get to things like the capacity that is, correct's too strong a word, but appropriate for that lake. Is that, is that an expectation we should have?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll give you this little bit of data. Corps of Engineers, we're part, Smithville's part of the Kansas City District Corps of Engineers.
Yeah.
Including in that lakes, those lakes is Truman, which has 1.9 million visitors.
Mm-hmm.
That's number one visitation for the Kansas City District.
Yeah.
Truman Lakes, 55,000 square or surface acres of lake.
Mm-hmm.
Number two, at 1.6 million visitors is Smithville at 7,000. So we're competing with something that's eight times our size almost.
Yeah.
So.
Well, my.
It is, it's a concern, yes.
Yeah, well, and my sister and her family live in Warsaw, they're right there by the dam, and so I have experienced that many, many times as well. Fortunately, there's no party cove there, so I don't got to deal with that.
Right.
But, but I, I just do want to, I guess what I'm trying to point out is that the market at Smithville Lake, if you want to call it that, has a lot of components to it and merely changing one aspect of that actually changes other aspects of it as well and most notably the experience. And so, okay, that's, that's what I got. Thanks, John. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Johnson?
Couple of questions. First, following up on Commissioner Lawson's thoughts, do you know how many of the renters of those slips are Clay County residents?
I do not.
You don't track that at all?
I don't know.
And the price is the same whether you're a Clay County resident or not?
Yes.
Has there been any thought into charging higher prices for out-of-county residents?
It has come up, but, you know, for years they've let everybody, county, non-resident, resident rent. So we're at a point, there's still 93 people that are mixed county residents, non. So our thinking is to get the number down and then look at that policy.
And is it true that the, that the, the cost of upkeep and everything else that's going on there is, is the burden of the Clay County residents or is that state money or what's paying for that, the lake and the amenities there?
It's visitors, slip holders, all that. So it's a mix.
And then can you go to the picture of the docks?
Which one? This one?
Go to the other one. Go to that one there.
Okay.
So what's that, Paradise Point?
Yes.
Okay, can I see that one of Camp Branch? Okay, back to Paradise Point again. So I noticed some of these docks are longer than others. Has there been any thought into instead of building new docks, just extending some of these docks? Would that be cheaper and more feasible?
Possibility. Some of them are shorter. Like I said, we had a microburst right before I started.
Yeah.
So they, I don't know if they had enough money to replace one, so they bought shorter docks.
Okay.
So it's possible.
I just wonder if that might be cheaper or out too expensive. So I'm not, I'm not convinced that more dock slips means a busier lake. Use Commissioner Lawson, for example, she didn't have a slip, but she certainly still took her boat to the lake. I think the dock slip just allows for more convenience for a lot of our boaters. Matter of fact, I'd argue if, if I had a dock slip down there, that I would, it would probably be a little bit easier for me to use that boat when it's not as crowded than when it is as crowded, it is more crowded. So I'm not convinced that there's a direct correlation there, unless you know something I don't, unless there's been some studies on that that would show that.
Don't, you can't just think about the docks, you have to think about the boat ramps. There's four boat ramps.
Right.
So there's all the people that come there.
Right.
And when parking lots are full there every weekend.
Yeah.
That's a lot of more traffic, so if you're adding, you're just adding more boats to the lake.
Well, so I would think that having more boat slips would alleviate some of the pressure at the ramps.
Not necessarily. It just brings, adds more space for more people to come in. I mean, it's.
Yeah. Okay, well, I'm not convinced of the correlation there. So I, I'm not, the total amount, I think you had on one of these slides, the total amount that we bring in for all slips combined is over $1 million a year, is that what it is?
Yes, sir.
That's the $1,036,000, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's all my questions, thanks.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you. So I'm grateful that we're doing the, the master plan and look forward to, you know, obviously that'll be a more fulsome capturing of, of all the dynamics here and we can get some better answers to these things. But I, but I do think it's a good question, right? To what extent does adding capacity in terms of docks actually, you know, make the lake busier and are we already at the peak? Obviously, at some, at some point you would reach diminishing returns in terms of the experience, you know? So some question around, are we actually there? And I'm sure that the, the master plan will examine that. So look forward to that. But I, I guess I'll come back to, there may be some question mark over that piece and look forward to, to that being studied. But in terms of the, the price component, I, I don't see why changing numbers there would, would have a negative effect with regard. In fact, if anything, if you increase the price, that would tend to have less demand. So I'm not sure taking that off the table makes a lot of sense, I think, you know, it probably should be on the table. And I actually am pretty open to Commissioner Johnson's idea about giving Clay County residents, you know, a discount relative to people outside the county. I think that, that sounds like a pretty good idea. Do you know if, or do you happen to know if other area counties do that?
Wyandotte County does that for theirs. They have a resident and a non-resident price. But what I'm getting at, there's 93 people on this list that are mixed, are resident, non-resident, and they've been waiting. So if we put Clay County president, residents at this time priority, how much are you going to upset the ones that are on that list?
Well, yeah.
So we're trying to get to a point where we can be fair, you know, either we start at zero, then okay, Clay County residents prior, or priority and then go from there. But just to get this list done is what our goal is.
Thank you. No, I, I do think we should honor the list and so go in order in which people have entered onto the list. But I don't think that would prevent us from, from charging different amounts, right? That we could still go in the order of the list, but, but charge more to out-of-county residents and.
You can do that.
Less to county.
We can do that.
Well, just, just a thought, I mean, you know, looking at these square foot prices again, it is quite a bit less here than it is in Jackson County, you know, maybe two and a, $2 average per square foot less is, is about what I've seen. And so, you know, one first step could be to, to match or come close to the Jackson County rate for, for out-of-county residents while, while holding pat on the, for county residents, something like that, just an idea. But anyway, I think it's a great discussion and, you know, like I said, look forward to the, to the parks master plan, glad we funded it and, yeah, look forward to making some ongoing changes with you all. Thanks.
All right. I have a quick question. Is it showing up better on your screens? Because it, it didn't look that bad when I made it. All right.
Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. John, I just chalk it up to the wonders of PowerPoint, so it is what it is. I, I, I do believe that in the end, the market kind of dictates what pricing is. I, I would exhibit one little bit of caution though, as we talk about different price points for residents and non-residents, it strikes me that anyone who has a, a boat and really wants to get to the water will do so wherever they can. Your previous slides show a little bit about the opportunities in Jackson County. It would seem to me that there, there may be, there may be Jackson County folks that come here to Smithville Lake, there may be folks from Clay County that go to Jackson County lakes. One thing that comes to my mind is simply if you start in Clay County charging resident, non-resident rates, I have a feeling very soon you will see the same sort of things in Jackson County. Does that matter? Maybe, maybe not. And I would hope that if the, if we are doing some study, that we might get some idea of that dispersal of ownership and use in various lakes. Maybe we can get that, maybe not, but hey, I'm always about trying to give a good deal to Clay Countyans, but if Clay Countyans are not using our facilities, they're somewhere else and then they get charged more, then what have we really done? Just put that out there, have no idea to what extent that actually happens. Love to see some numbers at some point if that actually exists. But just, you know, the old saying of if it's good for the goose, it's good for the gander. If you want to be the goose, that's fine, that means the gander's somewhere lurking, ready to make their move as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Lawson?
The more docks, I don't think directly equate to more traffic because, I'll tell you why, and this is from experience. We have that pontoon boat and my husband forces me to go up there with him when he's bass, when he's bass fishing or, or the crappie are hitting or whatever, and I go kicking and screaming. But when we're there, you're, you're driving around on the lake and the boat docks are packed with boats there. It isn't like everybody that's, that has a boat up there is rushing out to get onto the lake because the crappie are hitting, you know? Some people are just pleasure boaters and they don't really care about the fish. But the bottom line is, I've never seen, being up there, whether it's on a holiday or it's during the week, we go a lot during the week, that, that the boats are all out of the docks and running around the lake. Now, you take this coming weekend, if it weren't raining, you'd probably see it pretty darn loaded and you'd see a lot of people out there. So I think Johnson's idea of increasing the size of the docks is phenomenal. So, I think J, Johnson's idea of increasing the size of the docks is phenomenal. If you could bring a few more of those off, you know, you just take each one, each marina and add five on each one of those, yeah, it's not going to be cheap. But I think it's going to pay for itself because we don't have to do it from ground zero in a whole new dock. That's one thing. But I am adamant, and I'm going to fight for this come hell or high water. If we want to raise rates, okay, that's, that's fine. And if we want to keep it what the market is, you know, not be crazy, but by crackey, we need to give our residents a lesser rate, and we need to give them priority, whatever the hell it takes to do it. That needs to be our top priority. They're paying for it, and they're getting not a darn thing for it. That's number one. And the other thing is, I think that, that, you know, raising the rates a little bit, I don't want to get crazy on it, but just a few bucks will, will help defray the cost for the, you know, building onto the docks. But, and I really think, and I don't see any reason under the sun why we can't put that list online. I think we should have that list online, and then everybody can see where they are. And if people pull off, I want to make sure that it's, and I'm not accusing anybody of doing anything underhanded, but sometimes, just depending on who's handling it, I want to make sure that when Suzie takes her boat and leaves, that next person is the one that gets called and gets the opportunity for it. And, and if it's a, somehow, we need to make sure our residents get a little bit of a priority on that. I don't know how we work that. But we need to start getting this in line because the season is on us. And once again, you know, people are unhappy about the way it's being done. So, we need to make our changes, and we need to be very transparent in what we do. So, that's the way I'd like to see it.
Commissioner Johnson.
First, I thought Commissioner Wagner was going to have boat slips turn into boat tariff conversation. Actually, a question I just forgot to ask. Do you know if any of the lakes limit the amount of boats they allow to launch on any given day?
I do not. I asked the Corps of Engineers if we had a capacity, and they were not able to find that.
Do you know if we have the ability? If we wanted to say, okay, we're going to launch however many boats that can, can use our ramp this day to launch? And, you know, once, once two-hundred boats get in, you got to, one's got to come out before we put another one in?
No.
Okay. No, we can't do that? Or no, you don't know?
I, there's no monitoring of that.
Yeah. Well, I would think whoever's, whoever's at the booth there, on the busy days, usually you have somebody in those booths, right?
Yes.
Taking, I'd figure it'd be easy to just count, but...
But there's no set capacity.
Yeah, okay.
So, they can use overflow parking, you know?
No, I guess what I'm saying is, could we set that capacity?
We could.
And say, okay, now it's getting too crowded, too dangerous, it's not funding anymore.
Right.
We're not going to let any more boats in.
But there'll be some enforcement issues in accomplishing that.
It would be very difficult to manage from a staff perspective how many boats are on the lake.
Yeah.
Yes, can you manage how many are coming in and using the boat ramp? Those you could limit and monitor.
Right.
But you have, we would have no way to track who's coming in, going to their boat that's in the slip and putting it out on the lake. So, to have a number of boats on the lake at one time, that would be very hard for us to determine what that looked like.
And how many total boat slips do we have again?
It's about a little over five hundred.
Five hundred?
Yeah. I didn't break it down by total, sorry. There's two-twelve at Camp Branch, two-sixty-seven at Paradise Point, and sixty-two at Sailboat.
So, okay, a little over five, so it's those three, right? So, a little over five hundred it looks like.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I had just one other question.
Yes, sir.
And then I'll go to Commissioner Lawson. Is there a governing body that we need to concern ourselves with? Because the State Highway Patrol, I believe, has some authority over Missouri Waterways. I don't know if we have to concern ourselves with that. And the other about the idea of extending on the docks, which I think is a very creative one. One of the things that I would want to know is, do we have any safety concerns on that? And there are, are there any insurance concerns? I mean, there's a lot, obviously, going on. So, I'm, I'm kind of asking these almost rhetorically, but if you know something about the governing body part of it, I'd be interested.
Governing start would be Corps of Engineers. They have to give permission first. Water Patrol or Highway Patrol, their input would be appreciated.
Because those two organizations merged sometime ago.
Yes. Highway Patrol and Water Patrol did, not Corps. You know, Highway Patrol's really is, goal is law violations on the water, you know, regarding boating. Like, capacity, I don't know if they would, if that's a county regulation, they wouldn't enforce the county regulation.
Because it occurred to me that there were some regulations that were state-based regulations that we need to abide by. So, I guess what I was looking at was, do, we, we might want to be aware of who those governing bodies are at the state level and make sure that we are coordinating with them so we don't inadvertently go down a, a path that would be better off avoided, or at least we could get by some, some pitfalls and maybe not fall into those traps.
We'll have to research all of that.
Thank you. Commissioner Lawson?
You know, another thing, Commissioner Johnson, we could, I could see them monitoring how the boats come in, you know, and how many. But there's, there's a portion of the lake where it, it is more controlled. And then you've got that other side of W where a lot of the bass boats and stuff put in, it's kind of free will over there. So, it, it would make it more difficult. The other side of the coin is, you can see how many come in, but then you also have to watch who comes off. Because maybe a guy's only got two hours to fish in the morning before he goes to work or whatever, and then he's going to pull out. So, there's that trade-off there. That would be one thing I could see, just would be almost uncontrollable, you know, to be able to do. But, you know, we could, but we could control what comes through that, our different ports that, that we charge for, you know, when they come in. So, but that's a possibility.
And I, real quick, you would also have to monitor the Clinton County side of the lake because they also have access.
Are there any more questions or comments for the director? Thank you. Are there any citizens who'd like to come forward and join this conversation? Please come forward. And when you come forward and, and just go ahead and queue up, I want to make sure we get everybody in. Make sure the green light is on. There's a green light around the collar of the microphone. Make sure that's on. State your name, and then please address the commission with any comments or questions you might have.
My name is Mark Crookstrom. I live in Smithville. I've got older kids now. And the, the really big issue here is, when fathers like myself have a brood, we have separate aged kids. And when that last one gets to be about five, we start thinking entertainment, so we go get a boat. Then we show up to Clay County, and they say, it's five years to get on the dock. So, by the time my kids, well, by the time I get a boat slip, my kids are older. That last one has got a girlfriend. The other ones have got other stuff they're doing now as older teenagers. And we're missing that opportunity. And it's happening to a lot of people. I was on the list probably ten years ago for four years. I hope tonight, nobody came here thinking that we're in a better spot with this boat situation than we were a year ago or ten years ago. We're in just as bad a spot. I like the idea of prioritizing Clay County residents. I don't like the idea of raising two thousand dollars a year to have a boat on a slip is an awful lot of money. And you're just going to start X-ing people out at the lower income scales. Oh, well, you don't make enough money, our lake's off limits to you. Is that the way we want to be? I called the Corps of Engineer and asked them, is there any limit to the boat slips? What do we have to do to get more? And they said, just ask. So, that's not the issue. We could put four or five boat slip, boats, boat docks up there, and they would all get taken up. They would all get paid for. It's, it's really frustrating, and I'm, I'm like, I'm kind of nervous, so that's part of the problem. But it's really frustrating to sit in a room where probably most of you are not boaters making decisions about boats. I had, my parents had a place at the Lake of the Ozarks for thirty years. And in the last fifteen years, literally thousands of condo condominium units have been built down there. Not just individual units, but a thousand, you know, thousands of big units with multiple people in them. And they go in into a place where a house or two was there, and maybe there was four boats. And they drop forty families in there, and they've got forty boats where they used to have four. We are nowhere near that situation at Smithville Lake. If we had more boat docks, the people that live anywhere near the lake have access to those seven days a week, and we would use those during the weekdays. And literally, if you show up on a Tuesday or Wednesday, you own the lake. There's four or five of their boats on the lake, and that's after five. So, population, boats bumping into each other, that's just not an issue. So, don't let that be an excuse to walk away from deciding to do something meaningful with this situation. And I really hope that just because we decided to talk about it doesn't mean that we're all going to be paying another two-hundred dollars next year. That would be sad. So, I don't know. I'm sure I've forgotten something I meant to say, but...
If you wouldn't mind for just a moment, Commissioner Carpenter, I believe you were, you've sought recognition? And by the way, you're doing fine. Don't be nervous. You're, you're, you know, we're very happy to have you here, and we appreciate you being here and saying your piece. Commissioner Carpenter?
Yeah, very much. Appreciate hearing from you. Yeah, to be clear, I'm not suggesting we raise prices. I'm just saying, if we have too much demand such that people are having to wait five, ten, fifteen years, there are only two ways to deal with that. One is what you're suggesting, which is to build some more docks. The other is to increase prices. That's the way to get the surplus demand down. I'm just observing that. I'm certainly open to building some more docks, especially once we do the Parks Master Plan. Hopefully, you know, that confirms for us that, that that's a possibility. And, you know, I think the last, you know, remark I made on it was, maybe we hold the current prices steady for Clay County residents and then increase on, on out-of-county residents, which I presume you're a Clay County resident, so that wouldn't impact you. But that's just one of the ways to get the amount of demand down so that the wait times go down. Would be to, you know, if you, if, if, let's say we were to charge out-of-county people more money, well, then there's going to be less interest in out-of-county people to, to get a boat dock here, which would help to shorten that list, get people like you on the lake faster. But those are our options. You know, we can, we can look at pricing, or we can look at, at capacity. And it sounds like we're going to be doing that in the months to come. So, I don't know if that's helpful to...
One of the things I, I guess I, I really should mention, there's a lot of frustration on this side of the table. And with the staff versus people on my side, I'm sure the staff is starting to hate the citizens because we're getting grumpy here, really grumpy. And they probably take a lot of lashings that are not theirs to take. They're actually yours to take. They're in a bad situation because it was never put together the correct way. And I'm sorry for all the tongue lashings and irritations and things that have come from the citizens, but it is a bad situation on this side of it. And, you know, I think it got a little bit worse when the list stopped at a hundred. Because then, that's really just seen as, you know, like when China does something and they don't want to publicize it, or they're thinking they're going to get unpopular about it, they just stop taking notes. They just stop publishing information about certain things. And that's kind of what it's like when you just cut the list down to a hundred and then say, well, we're under a hundred. There's been a lot of citizens that have just frankly given up on the lake. And that's not an improvement, that's just giving up. So, that's all.
Commissioner Johnson?
Couple of questions for you, sir. First of all, you mentioned lashing out at, at staff and some of the folks there. Is that because of the waitlist for the docks? Or is there other issues?
Oh, I'm sure it is. I'm, yeah, I mean, that's one of the issues. That's the big issue.
That's the big issue?
I know that, that when we had a really large snow this year, none of that snow was taken off the top of the docks. Had, everybody was on the internet thinking, oh, shoot, I'm going to lose my boat. When, when they inquire to the Parks Department, hey, what's going to happen to my boat, they're kind of like, hey, nothing. We're not doing anything with it. So...
So, for the, for the docks themselves, the solution that you have, if I'm hearing you're right, the solution you're suggesting is, we need more docks.
Right.
More, a little more slips.
Right.
Do you have a number in mind that you think would be adequate?
I, I don't.
You don't? And then you mentioned something about Clay County residents either getting a priority or a deal. What were your thoughts on that?
Just be a priority on the list.
Okay.
I'm not sure how that can be done either. I'm just, you know...
Okay. Any other suggestions on how we fix this?
Well, the first, obviously, is just to build more, more dock space. I only thought today about the prioritizing of Clay County people, the issue of taking care of the dock, you know, the, the chronic stuff. Having snow pile up on a dock to the point that it pushes it down, flips it over, or does something else to the boats that are inside it.
It's piled up on the, on the roof or on the dock itself?
On the roof.
On the roof, okay.
When it snows really heavy, the, the docks are tied down to the bottom of the lake so they don't...
Right.
...rock excessively. But there's also flotation in there, and there's a limit how much the stuff can take. So, they just start going down, and they start taking the boats down with it, if that makes any sense.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, we had gigantic snow like twelve years ago at the Lake of the Ozarks, and docks were flipping left and right down there.
And that's, and so the expectation is that staff would take care of that and clean those off?
For paying two grand a year, you know, I don't think that's, I don't think that's our line.
Yeah, I don't, actually, I don't know. I don't know the operation now. I see John shaking his head, yes, that, that's something we do, right?
Oh, real quick.
Yeah.
Okay, earlier this year in January, C Dock, which is at Camp Branch, which would be this dock right here.
Yeah.
Had about six... It piled up. It pushed the dock down.
Yeah, okay.
It did not sink the dock. It was also probably about twenty below, so I can't have staff out there on a boat because the dock, also, the, that cove froze in. So, it took about a week and a half so I can get staff in there out on a pontoon boat. We had to drag some of it off, and then we were also using a pump, to pump water on the roof to wash it all off. So, it had to get to about thirty degrees before we can get out there and get to it. That is an insurance claim, and that's being repaired now. And hope, and Atlas Docks is working on something to where, A, put more bracing under that side to help prevent that and add some more, the floatations, put a different grade on there to hold more weight.
And you get some heaters in our roof is what we need.
Well, we can do that, but it's also, it's... Well, we can do that, but it's also, it's, how do I, you've seen the metal carports?
Uh-huh.
It's that same type of roof. It's not, and for me to get staff up on that roof is no, that's too dangerous.
Right.
We've had one, when the tornado, we had, that flipped one, we had an employee hurt, fell through the roof when they were dismantling that boat dock many years ago.
So, it's basically just to keep the sun off and maybe a little bit of rain?
Exactly. We do the best we can and I, but I can't risk employees to just go out there and shovel it off when it happens. And then the heat strips, you know, they bake in the sun and dry rock and then they cause fire hazards, so there's a lot more to it.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have for now.
Mr. Director, while you're up there, I didn't wanna interrupt any citizens, but as long as you hear, I had two kinda quick questions you may or may not have answers to, and that is, should we decide to expand, and it would depend upon the manner of that expansion, what would be the lead time it would take to have those put into place? I mean, it depends on a lot of factors, but just kinda ballpark, are we talking months, a year, two years?
You're probably two years, easy.
Okay. And then the other question I had is, one way to get more people, new, people who are on the waiting list, off the waiting list, is when folks who have slips decide they can go ahead and let them go for a variety of reasons, do you have any numbers on what the turnover is so that, do X number of slips on average come up every year?
It varies, this year, hold on, I gotta... We had about sixty-three come off this year, or add, or new people, and that's all three docks, that's, so. Year before that was eighty-three, twenty-three was ninety, twenty-two was forty-seven, it just fluctuates.
And it's important to keep in mind that not all docks are equal in that
Right.
Not only size, but you have the sailboats and you have powerboats and there are different categories.
You know, turnover rate on, you know, big boats is not, slips is not very often, sailboat coves not very often. The little powerboat, yeah, bass, bass boats, ski boats, all that, turnover through them.
And the thing is, that would be good information because if we do contemplate an expansion of those slips, it's good to know not just that we need them, but also what market we are, we are going for, quite honestly, if we're going for where those are. And it might also, and again, I, I don't want to get into it too deeply now, but it might be interesting to know, at some point if we go further, those on the waitlist, what size slip are they looking for so we know what the demand is there and that we could then answer that demand in the most efficient way possible, should we, should we do that?
Okay.
Thank you. Sir, I didn't, I didn't wanna make you feel like you were, you know, being forced off the dice, so if you've got any of the comments, please come up and make them.
I've got one other thing to bring up, and that's the issue, that, that boat dock that has no roof. Now, I'm not sure if this is official or not, but I've been told more than once that if you accept one of those slips without a roof, it gets you on the list earlier. And it gets you a priority on the list. I'm not sure how much those spots cost, but it's probably at least a thousand bucks a year. So, I've got a boat that if you put it out in the rain, it will fill up and sink. I also don't wanna just leave it in the water, I want it on a lift. So, you can imagine that some of us who are a little bit more conspiratorial minded think this is a shakedown for just more money. And I don't know if that's still a practice, but that needs to go tomorrow. Holding people hostage on the list to, just for money, to have that slip that is absolutely useless to their boat. Does that, does everybody understand what I'm saying here?
The lists were a really big issue, at least that I was aware of, maybe five, six years ago, for a variety of reasons, not the least of which is some of them were being removed without, well, I won't go into the, into it, but yes, you're right. The thing is, what you're raising, which is really a good point, is this is not just a simple idea of putting together a one-size-fits-all slip, but we've got to be thinking about the, the entire picture that are, the people are leasing these slips are putting, are dealing with, and that is, we're talking about the issue of water, we're talking about the issue of the lifts and how those are managed, the size and the quantity of the slips, so I mean, this is information that, that we don't necessarily, that we could use more of, I guess is the way to put it, we could use more information of the quality that you are giving us, and that combined with, with some kind of actual research into it, I think helps us to make it a decision that is going to be, I think, improving what the experience that you and folks like you have at the docks. So, I mean, that's, that's kinda the goal here, is to sort of understand, because you're, I mean, I do not have a boat, but, you know, there were a period of time where I was spending kind of a decent amount of time down there, because it was an issue that was being discussed quite vigorously here at the county, so I was down there working through, trying to understand those issues. So, yeah, we, that's why we certainly appreciate you being here. And always know that, that your opinion is valued and that we would want to hear from you, so if you, if you leave this room, don't think that this is the only bite at the apple you or any of the other citizens have, we wanna hear from you, we want to understand the problem because we wanna solve it. But there's, you know, we, not everybody can know everything, so the experiences that you've had are very valuable and they illustrate a broader issue in my mind. Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, so you bring a very good point, and I'm hoping maybe our director can clarify how our list works. A specific question I have is, let's say somebody wants a covered slip, is an opening for a non-covered slip? You call them up and say, "Hey, we got an opening for a non-covered slip", they say, "Hey, no, I want a covered slip", what, what does that do? Are they now off the list again? How's that work?
If you're off the list.
You're off the list.
You're given an option for a slip, if you decline that slip, then you're off the list.
So, so they have to get lucky and if a covered slip opens up, and if that doesn't, so you don't have a list, a separate list for, "Hey, I just want covered" versus "I want non-covered",
No.
And that stinks. That's, so what I'm seeing here is, we have a disconnect between government and the folks that we serve in this, in this area. And I'm not saying because of you, I'm saying just our system that we have. And we need to be able to take a look at this system and say, "Okay, how can we, how can we fix this? How can we have a better connect with our citizens who pay?" To me, it's like, you know, we should be providing a Nordstrom level of service, okay? You know, we work for them. They pay our salaries, we want to give them the best county, the best experience living here that we can give them, you know, within reason of our budget, but here we have this beautiful lake, which I'm on quite a bit, and I think is extremely underutilized, I think it's one of the most hidden gems we have. I'm in there all the time. And I'm surprised at how few people are there, at least when I'm there, maybe it's me, I don't know.
I didn't wanna be the one to say that.
And I'm fine with that, too. But, but there's a disconnect, there's, it's not just people here tonight, but we've all, we've all heard some stories, particularly I have, of people that are just frustrated and upset with the system, how it works, how to get a slip. I don't think it's fair, the system that we have now, if I wanna covered slip, I need a covered slip for my boat. I can't have, I can't have an open, an uncovered slip. But I have to get on the list for the uncovered slips, and if that comes up and I don't, can't use that one, I'm off the list now for another five years or whatever it is. I think that system needs to be fixed. I don't know the solution off the top of my head, I mean, an easy one is, hey, covered slip versus uncovered slip, list, I don't know, and I'm sure maybe you guys have thought through this, but I think something needs to change. I think there's a disconnect that we have with our boater community out there. And we need to figure, whether it's maybe put together a group of boaters to help us come up with a solution, I don't know. Do we even have a boating committee?
No, there's not a committee, but there is, there's a boating group.
Oh, yeah. Maybe something that helps us come up with some of those things? Cause we wanna serve them, we want, we want, we want to make them happy and, and to tout, "Hey, now this is a great lake, but the staff out there is awesome", and not say, "Hey, we're butting heads with them and have to apologize for the way we treated staff because we're so frustrated". We don't want them frustrated. And we gotta figure out a way to fix that.
And that's something that, you know, again, I go to the master plan, there's public hearings and all that and get that input and see what we can
And where we
Get from that data.
What's the timeline on the master plan?
Our committee to pick the vendor has, in final processes, so I'm guessing first June-ish.
Okay.
First two weeks, maybe three.
So, we're rolling on a couple of weeks here?
Yes, you'll have a RCA for a vendor.
Okay, perfect.
By the way, I wanna correct myself, Commissioner, I think the Parks Board might well have something to do with this, I would wanna double check, but I believe they may well be at one conduit. The other thing is, you bring up a good point, because what we're talking about here, for instance, that particular policy, I think that's something we need to be looking at. And it's not a matter of us, of us, you know, being critical of staff or anything like that, it's a matter, basically, I think what we're doing is we are hearing things, we're expressing our concerns, and then, you know, staff has been always very responsive in my experience in, in recent years, so, and then staff would, could give us some solutions, some possible remedies to some of those situations.
Yep, I agree.
And I, I don't mean to be negative, but when we were sitting at eight hundred and sixty-nine people on a list, we're getting complaints that it's just taking too long, too long, too long, so now we do get to a process where we get that list down, and some of that is, you know, undertaken, calling people, "Are you still interested?", "No", blah, blah, blah. Or, now we're offering, you're getting an offer to slip. If you take it, take it, or if you don't, you're off the list. There's not a real happy solution anyway.
Well, so I get that, but my response to that is you're looking at it from the side of you have to manage that list. Look at it from a side that you're on that list.
Right.
And you're on that list and you've been on the list for years, but you got a boat that has to be covered, and now a slip comes up, you don't get it, now you're off the list.
I understand.
I would be so frustrated, so frustrated with that. So, so I guess that's what I'm saying, it's like, let's, let's take off our, our management, government hat and put on the, "Hey, I'm a boater now at Smithville Lake".
Right.
How, how do we make them, how do we serve them the best that we can, is really what I'm trying to, and as fair as we can.
And I understand what you're saying, I know, but like I say, if they take H Dock, the uncovered dock, they can put in relocation, and then they can get into the covered docks.
Wait, say that again?
If you put in, you can put in a relocation at the end of the contract period and be on, available for an uncovered dock on the relocation list.
Okay, so then
And that fills, that fills faster.
So, let me walk through this then. Okay, I got a boat, I, I need a covered dock, an uncovered dock comes up, so I'm gonna take the uncovered dock, I'm not gonna put my boat there, I'm just gonna take the docks out, so I'm in a dock, I'm gonna pay for it and not put my boat there, and wait for a covered dock to open up, and when that covered dock opens up, you don't go to the list for that one, you first go to the people who wanna trade docks?
Yes, that's relocations, yes.
So, so, so once everybody's, all the relocation has gone through, the relocation list has been gone through, then whatever's left
Goes to the pub.
We put that up to the list.
The list.
And is most often, is that dock that's left open an uncovered dock that goes to the people on the list? Or no?
No, there's only twenty-seven slips on H Dock, so
That's, that's the only uncovered one.
Yeah, so there's more.
Okay.
But like I say, it fluctuates.
Yeah.
We have four commissioners who are queued up to make comment, but what I would like to do is go back to the citizen who had the floor originally, see if you have anything else that you would like to add to the conversation. I'll go ahead and then recognize the commissioners and then we will jump back to citizens, because I, I do wanna make sure that they, and if, if there's a commissioner who, who is wanting to ask a particular citizen something, we can do that, but let's first off go back to you, sir, and if you have anything you'd like to add, any questions you would like to ask, I, I believe you kind of have the floor, and then we will go from there.
I, I will just say
Oh, please come up to the mics, we can hear you very clearly.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'll just say, the, bringing that H Dock up as a solution to getting on the list is just the most ridiculous thing I've heard all night. Here, give us some money, don't put your boat on our, on our dock because we know you don't, it won't do any good for you, but give us some money to get on the list. I mean, if that's not seen as offensive, it just blows my mind that, that anybody could actually bring that up in a serious mood. All my kids are aged out of the dock, out of the lake, Lake Bozmas, so I'm here, I've got my boat for sale, so I'm kind of out of this situation right now. If there's a committee that gets generated to come up with answers that's serious in nature, I'm more unhappy to sit on it and help. That's all I can do, is just offer my experience or whatever. I'm willing to do that.
Could you hold for just a minute, because what I wanna do is ask if any of the commissioners seeking recognition are wanting to speak to you in particular while you're up here and be respectful of your time, so are any of the commissioners who are on the queue wanting to inquire of this particular citizen?
While we address his concern.
Address his concern? Okay, are you all pretty much in that vein?
No.
Okay, let's go ahead and if, if you've concluded, let's go ahead and go through the commissioners, I, who wanted to address the concern that you raised, then I would like to bring additional citizens up who might be interested in commenting, that seems the fairest way, because we've been talking for a long time, but we do need to hear from citizens, so
That's correct.
Commissioner Carpenter, see if I can conquer the technology, go ahead and, that way if, if you're wanting to address his questions, he's, he's here and he
Yeah, no, I don't think, yeah, I think we've got, 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 got plenty of time. So, so, thank you, Commissioner. So, the, the question of, of shortening the wait time is, is the complicated one, it's the question of supply and demand, of cost and of increasing capacity, we're gonna do the Parks Master Plan, so that's a, that's a longer-term solution. I think the issue that Commissioner Johnson drilled down on is one that we ought to address You know, we have twenty-seven uncovered docks, that's something like five percent of the total docks, although, you know, maybe more like ten percent if we exclude the sailboat cove ones. In other words, when you come up your time on the list, it is improbable, but possible that you're gonna get that one, and, and the idea that if you're just the unlucky son of a gun who, who, who gets the uncovered one when your turn on the list comes up, that now you are off the list, or that you have to pay, you know, the, the amount of money until one that you can actually use comes up, I just think we ought to fix that. While we continue the conversation around getting the wait time down, I don't, I don't think we should continue having that be the policy. You mentioned just have two different lists, that seems like it's probably the solution to me, although I'm open to other ideas. But I really think we ought to do that right away, and not have people end up in a situation in which their number gets pulled up after five years and then they're told, "You get this dock that you can't use", and if they can't use it, then they have to wait another five years, I think that'd be a real bummer, to your point. So, my observation is just that that is a thing we can solve much more easily than the other thing, the other thing we should attempt to solve over time, and this thing I think we ought to solve tonight.
Do any of the other three commissioners seeking recognition want to inquire of the citizen? If it's okay with you folks, and I'd like to go ahead and hear from citizens, and then if, if your comments will hold, we'll go ahead and follow up. Are there any other citizens who wish to come forward? Please come forward, and as I said, please state your name and then address your remarks and proceed.
Yeah, good evening, Kirsten Windblade, current Clay County resident. Appreciate the conversation that we're having around this, I would agree, there is a lot of frustration. We have been trying to get on this list for four years and have been repeatedly told we're not taking names. However, it depends on who you are around when you are out on the lake, the conversations that are heard. I will tell you that we have been around people at various beaches and in the coves where they will say, "Oh, yeah, we just got a, got a slip, do you know of anybody getting a lift or has a lift to sail?", and they weren't on the list. It kinda depends on who you call and who you get and what the answer's gonna be, in all honesty, as a citizen, and who you are around. In all transparency, it would be nice and appreciated by the citizens if that list was published. There is nothing private on that list if you just publish the names of the list. You're not giving any contact information, you're not giving addresses, you're not giving directory information whatsoever, it's just a name, and that's fair game. There's nothing private, there's not, you're not violating a FERPA. So, I'm not understanding why the list is so secret. It is unfortunate, you have to go through a Sunshine request to get the list, to see that there actually is one. Again, we have been trying for four years to get on this list, which is really, really frustrating, so yes, we trailer every single weekend and we trailer multiple times during the week, because we use it, we have kids who are of the age. I will also say that there is a way to, when you open the list, like he said that we I will also say that there is a way to, when you open the list, like he said, that we're getting it to 100, well, we're now below 100. So when that list does open, we've been told, we'll call back in a few weeks, call back in June, call back in whatever, we'll post it on our website when we're gonna open this list. So we call, we look at the website multiple times a week, we're looking, we're calling, and there's nothing, there's no movement. We're still not taking names on this supposed list. So there's gotta be some way to formally publish, like whether it be a Google form, that you can hit the now accepting responses, now turn off the responses, like some way to make it fair and equitable. For those that don't have access to a computer or internet at home, have a kiosk up at the park office. Like, there's gotta be some way so that it's fair and equitable, so that you're not relying on who you call, who you are, and what you do. Like, that's gotta be fair and equitable. So publish the list, that's what we're asking. We're asking when this supposed list does come available, figure out how to make it fair and equitable, so you're not relying on who you happen to get on the phone that day, or who you happen to get in front of you that day, but make it fair and equitable. We will say that the uncovered dock is nothing but a breakwater. There aren't boats on it, and actually, we were just up there this weekend, and noticed that there were two boats that were occupying it, but both were like, they had just launched, they parked, and they were getting off, like going out into the water. We also have been up there on all the busy weekends, there is not unsafe, and it's not incredibly busy. Like, it's just not. Even the boat launches aren't that crazy. You might have to wait five, 10 minutes to launch, but it's not that crazy. Plenty of parking spots, just because you add more docks or spaces onto the docks and make them longer, you're not gonna increase the traffic on that lake. So, those are the two things that we want, we just want it fair and equitable, and publish the list. Thank you.
Hold on a moment, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington, did you have a question of the citizen?
I was trying to get ready to ask for a few minutes, sir.
Well, the thing is, like I say, my priority is to recognize citizens at this point, but you are recognized, good for you.
Well, so mine wasn't directly for her, it was, it's to address her concern and his concern, but I was gonna say pretty much what John said when you went to him when I was next, but what I was gonna say was, I think if we ask for the consensus from the commission tonight, I think we can solve two problems. I think we can get the waitlist issue resolved by posting it, and so if you, before we leave, you'll ask for commission consensus, and then also, I think we can end the practice of getting people kicked off the list for offering a uncovered, I think that's, I wouldn't be frustrated, like, I'd be pissed if that was me, but, but yeah, no, I think we can get those two fixed tonight with a consensus of the commission. But for John, is it possible to put a roof on the H dock, I guess it is?
Anything's possible, but I would, the age of that one, I would say, I wouldn't do it. I would, if you're gonna do anything, put a new one up.
So is that, so that's something we could look at in our master plan, is replacing H dock with a?
Yeah, that's, it's a different built dock, it's half of a dock, and there's a big steel plate that goes down that edge, on the outside edge, so it's...
And then I also had a question about the master plan. So here we are, ending May, we're coming up to June, if we approve the vendor, you said, next week or the following?
Probably the following, maybe third week.
All right, so then it would be, that'd be what, first week in June, right? June 5th? All right, so when will they start?
Immediately.
Immediately? How long will it take?
Probably this time next year, it would be finished.
I hate, I hate master plans, because every time we do master plans, they just get put on a desk, or on a shelf, or on a bookcase, and just collect dust. So, so we're gonna spend a quarter of a million dollars, and it's gonna take, and we won't have the results until next year?
Correct.
So in the meantime, really not gonna solve too many problems.
Not till next year.
Are you wanting to inquire, Commissioner?
No, I'm just kind of stunned.
Well, if I could interject, one of the reasons that it takes a long time is the public process, right?
I understand that, but we had a master plan that was done over a decade ago that never got fully implemented, so now we're gonna do another one, and I would bet that doesn't get fully implemented. And it's just frustrating, because, I don't, it's really frustrating. Like, I don't even know what to say. I mean, I used to give Scott crap when he was my councilman over these things, because we spend taxpayer money, you take all this time, you get a piece of paper with some pretty pictures on there, and it never gets implemented. So then, in 2035, I'm sure the next park director's gonna say, hey, we need to update our master plan, and then we'll have two or three master plans that got done that never got implemented. It's just very frustrating, but it is what it is. But seriously, I want you to ask for consensus before we leave here tonight and get those two problems solved.
Commissioner Johnson, I'm sorry, will you complete? Okay, thank you.
A couple courses. First of all, Commissioner Withington just threw out a number of a quarter million dollars for this master plan. Do we have a price on that, roughly?
We budgeted $250,000.
$250,000. How many docks can $250,000 give us? How many slips could $250,000 give us, roughly?
Quarter. I mean, if we got bid as 1.3 million for the structure itself, a $250,000, maybe 10?
10 slips. And then, I had a comment about, or just a suggestion, when we talked about this waiting list, by the way, I agree with Commissioner Withington, some things we can just get done tonight, and not wait for master plan, but with this waiting list issue, and whether you're gonna have a covered or uncovered, just a suggestion. You know, when I go out to eat at a restaurant, and there's a wait, they ask indoor or outdoor or first available. It's that simple. And if I say indoor, and an outdoor comes up, they'll skip me, but I don't lose my place on that list. They'll go to the next guy that wants outdoor, and then when the indoor comes up, I'm good to go. It could be that simple on our list, say, covered, uncovered, or first available. And that would just make it that much easier, I think. To keep the list the way it is, but not bump people off the list. And then the other question I have is, why are there so many vacant uncovered slips?
I don't know.
So they're actually being paid for though, right? They're actually being rented out?
You can put your boat there, I can't, I don't have to force you to put your boat there.
No, 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 I get it, but they are all rented out, so is there, probably they're waiting for a covered slip maybe? Do you think that could be it? So they're just holding that spot, which is just so unfair that we're making them pay that money just to hold the spot for a covered slip? I don't like that. Because there are some people that would probably want the uncovered slip, that don't get that either, so nobody gets their slips. You see what I'm saying?
H dock, you wouldn't.
Pardon me?
The uncovered slip is not that popular.
Yeah, but do you think there's anybody who would want the uncovered slip?
It's possible.
I mean, I would think we'd want to give them a shot at it, and let the other person know, hey, you know, you're not gonna lose your spot, you're gonna get the next covered slip, or you know, whatever order you're in.
And we...
But you follow my thought, you follow my thinking, right? You're picking up what I'm laying down here.
We have people on the list that will, they say they will take the first available they can get.
Yeah.
So, that's who we...
Yeah. But I guess what I'm saying is, people are taking these uncovered, these uncovered slips because they know that's how to get into the covered slip quicker, when I don't think that, I don't think we should work like that. I don't think that's fair. And I think, quite frankly, we limit people that could use those uncovered slips. Even if we, if there's people that don't want them, we rent them out for day slips or whatever, you know, I don't know what the, I think there's other options, but I think we need to look at this stuff a little bit more closely, and how we can better serve the voting community, and I bet they have a lot of good ideas on how we could do that as well.
We have day slip rentals behind our bait shop.
Say that again?
We have day slip rental behind the bait shop.
Okay.
What's, those are used for.
Is that used very often?
Holiday weekends, yes.
Yeah.
So this weekend, yes.
Yeah, so maybe have it more available on, would be helpful. Okay, anyway, okay, that's enough, I got other people waiting to talk.
Yeah, and I want to, we've got two more commissioners that are queued up, and I want to make sure we get back to the public comments, because we've talked a lot, and we need to hear from citizens, but with that, Commissioner Wagner?
No, thank you, thank you. I believe my colleague, Commissioner Johnson, used the wrong part of the analogy, what I think he described as the seat at the bar, that the uncovered slip seems to remind me of, right? I can hit that, or I can wait, right? But having said that, I think it's a proper analogy, and it makes a lot of sense in that case, and I tend to follow the line of thinking of my colleagues related to some of those more immediate moves. I am also, I had tried for years to forget what Commissioner Withington said, and then now I remember all of it, but I will take that moment to say that the one, that the Parks Master Plan is just not a master plan of the lake, it is everything else. So, I think we need to be cognizant that when you're talking countywide parks assets, it is more than just the lake. But the other piece to it is then what happens with it, and I would just mention that part of the, part of the reality of those plans is, what are you prepared to do after you've got it? We do have, as we've talked about a few times, you know, a half-cent sales tax on the park side of, currently for authorization. If we were to choose to build more docks and outfit the marina more, then you would simply have a plan of finance with that, which would involve that 18 years, or whatever the years have to be, of revenue based against that. So, although I sometimes used to resemble the comment earlier from my colleague, I also would say that in this case, if you have a park-wide plan, you have things that people want, you build a plan of finance against it, either based on revenue or taxing authority, and then it's just a matter of the will to actually do that. So I do feel that if folks don't want the chairs at the bar, and we want inside seating or outside seating, or whatever the case may be, you can build a plan of finance if the demand is there to, and the revenue to help pay for that. So, just, I just wanna bring those forward, just to say that we can do something if we have the will to do something, and I appreciate our citizens who have come here today to outline the issues that they're facing. I think there are solutions, some short-term, as we've discussed tonight, and then based on what we get back, a way of financing them. One final thing before I forget, so I don't have to hit this button again, I would make the request, because I don't think I have seen the RFP that we have put out for the plan, it would seem to me that if we have an understanding of what the scope is that we put out there, that when a decision is made by staff and it comes forward, that so long as that scope matches with what we've heard tonight, then I, we would at least have some confidence that whatever the product is that we get at the end of that process, that it does answer what we have heard this evening, and then we can move forward based on that. So I'll end that comment there, and appreciate it.
Commissioner Lawson?
The, boy, I'm with Commissioner Withington. $250,000 for this plan. That just makes me crazy. And I understand that there has to be some kind of a plan, whether you're getting ready to renovate your house, or you're getting ready to do changes in the park, and you want to see, why is this more important than this, or where do we want to be in five years? All of that is vital, and it's vital in the government. I guess I don't understand why we've got to go outside to get that done, and when you think about it, it's like doing a plan for road and bridge. We do 100, 250,000, 300,000 planned road and bridge, we could have blacktop a whole bunch of roads in that plan, you know, instead of what we do today. With this, it's the same way. We put out this 250,000, I realize it's for the golf course and all the other many things we have, but I can't, I can't understand why that is so necessary, and so very often, nothing comes of it. Look at the plan we did, look at the thing we just did for the increase in salaries. We spent all that money for the increase in salaries, and over half of our people are unhappy with the way it came back. So, you know, was it really worth the money we spent? I don't think so. So here again, we've got this facing us, and we've got a park board, where are they? Why aren't they giving us some input on this? If this has been a problem all this time, I would have liked to have seen our park board be more involved and say, what the heck's going on over there at the lake? What do we need? What do we need to? We could build a whole bunch of docks, or not maybe a whole lot, but we could increase the size of our existing docks, and build as much as we can for the 250 versus spending on that. So, I mean, I know it's, whatever's gonna happen is gonna happen, but I do agree with you, we've got to have somebody finish this, where we, we are gonna have a list, and we are gonna look at the way that we do these, we're gonna publish the list, and we're gonna look at the, what we need to do, not to just push somebody off a list because they won't take what we offered. What a kick in the teeth when you think about it. That's really rude to the people that pay for the darn thing. So, I'd like to see that kind of fixed, so if I want a slip, and I want a covered, maybe you say, I prefer a covered, if an open one comes up, and they are on the list, they get an opportunity to take it, they don't want it for many reasons, like the gentleman said, my boat is, you know, where it'll sink if it gets full of water. So then, you just move him back, you keep him on the list. You don't bump him off the list and say, tough stuff, you know, you gotta wait another five years now. So, anyway, we need to be looking at that, and be more, much more careful about how we treat our citizens on things of this nature. But I think, I think 250 for that study just blows my mind, so whatever that's worth.
Commissioner Withington?
I just had a question for Commissioner Wagner. When you were talking about that sales tax, were you talking about a sales tax or a property tax? Because I know our property tax levy's currently at zero for parks, right? Yes.
So, as I understand it, we, and I can be corrected, I understand we currently have a half-cent of park sales tax that is currently unused, but we have authority for, if that's...
That's correct. You'd have to go to the voters to have the approval of establishing a park sales tax, but that is a revenue opportunity. And Commissioner Withington is correct, too, the county does have a mill levy for, dedicated for parks, but it is at zero.
Right.
Yeah, so, I mean, that would be a whole nother discussion, right? If we ever did go down that way, since it'd be countywide, definitely want to look at how we can use some of that money in the Western District, and so, but I just wanted to get clarification on which one you were talking about.
Please, I won't say you were off again, gotcha.
And thank you for that, and my reason for bringing that up is just simply, if you have a plan that suggests courses of action that, through a public process, suggest needs to be taken, or desirable assets that people want, then to kind of, to your earlier point, to be able to say, okay, if this is what the public wants, then here is a means by which to achieve that, so, so that's really the point, yeah, yeah.
And if I could interject, that is part of the scope of the Park Master Plan, is whatever the outcome is of desire by the citizens, then the question is, what is the feasibility, how do we fund that, and you give the commission options to consider and discuss.
By the way, Administrator, just for the, I mean, I think we're all pretty familiar with the process of the levies, but if you could give us kind of what the schedule is, more, you know, more for the benefit of the people who are listening, as far as if we should decide to adjust the levies up. Can you give, for the, everybody who's listening, a little bit of an idea of what that schedule is?
So, as everyone knows, you got your assessed valuations, currently people are submitting to the Board of Equalization if they want to appeal their assessed valuation. So we don't have the final numbers of assessed valuation, but once that is done, later in late summer, early fall, then that information is given out to every jurisdiction, and then the establishment of the mill levy rate for the tax bills that will go out in December are then established by the commission, I want to say it's October-ish, I think is when we typically do that.
Yeah, the reason I wanted you to outline that was so that citizens listening would understand that to tap into that particular revenue source, that would be the timeline that... that we would be looking at, so that we don't, I didn't, I didn't want to create any unrealistic expectations in the minds of our citizens, that this could be, that, that this revenue could be generated, you know, at the snap of a finger. There is a process that we go through, and the more citizens are familiar with what that process is, the better. I want to get back to citizen comments. I've got a question for the director, but I don't want you to answer it right now, because I want to go to citizens. And that is the feasibility of putting covers on docks that are uncovered right now. I know that might be a silly question, but I, I wanted to ask it. But if you could answer that at some point before we leave the discussion, I really want to get back to citizens, because I feel as though we're not giving them their due time. Are there any of the citizens that would like to come forward and need to make comments, ask questions, or whatever? And once again, just as a reminder, make sure the green light is on. State your name. It's on like magic. And state your name, and please go ahead and make your comments or questions.
My name is Larry Garvey, and I live in Smithville, and I'm a frequent user of, of the lake and avid outdoorsman out there. So a lot of the answers, I guess we're looking for, were answered here today. It's a shame that we had to come here to get those, right? To not, it, it sounds like we're going to move in the right direction, get something moving forward, where something either goes online, or is, and/or is posted. Other frustrations, when you visit, much like the lady before me that came up, said, you know, four years I've been trying to get on the list. Every time you go there, and you're told, feel free to come back and check as often as you like. That is the best response you can get out of somebody. So frustration continues to build year over year over there. So definitely, maybe some education of the staff, or giving them more ammunition of answers to share with the public, when they go in, even if it's a printed handout, where they don't have to explain it over and over, and just give and say, here's where we are on the list. A few other things. Last year, something was generated, and all I have is an email sent to me, no reply at civicplus.com. And that was, if you were interested in getting a boat slip, and it asked the questions, wet or dry slip, the size of the slip, there's a few, let me, your boat size, are you new to Smithville Lake, comments or questions? That was in December of '23. I haven't heard anything back, and I don't know who the owner of that email is, as it comes back as a no reply. So, and then, as you talked about, making things better, and fairness of either take the uncovered slip, or you're off the, the, the list. One thing that probably got glazed over real quickly in the process also says, if you're somebody that's been on this list for four years, and you don't answer within 24 hours, you're off the list. Again, that's not fair. People's email address, phone numbers may have changed, and without there being an online list, maybe to update your information, that's something I would encourage you also to look at and make it, make it better for somebody. So, and then, like I said, to come here to get questions answered, how does the list work? As the director did a great job of explaining, he had the answers. Nobody, when you go to Smithville Lake, can tell you how, how that works. So just making that information available to people, I think, would alleviate a lot of frustration. And lastly, I would just ask, those boat slips that are shorter, and talked about extending, what is the availability of more docks being added? And would those be double, double docks? And how many more could we add, instead of building brand-new docks, just adding on to those? And how much does that reduce the list? And then, to echo again what the young lady before me said, it, it's, it's in the terms of just fairness and equitable for all of us. So again, and we're out there, we're willing to help, we don't want to complain, we just, we, we want, we just want an answer. And so, thank you again for sharing today, and if there's anything else we can do as a public, please reach out again and post that you're going to have this forum, because we'll be here. Thank you.
Just one moment, sir. Commissioner Lawson.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for coming, all of you for coming, because a lot of times, you know, we get so caught up in so many things here, and maybe we don't hear what, what you're telling the people at the lake. Well, that may never come back to us, and not because they are hiding it, but just because it just doesn't come up in conversation. So for citizens to come and talk to us, we really appreciate that a lot. And I think any of us that you call here to the, to the courthouse, and you say, I want to talk to Commissioner Lawson, or Withington, or whomever, if, if we're not in the office, and they leave a message, there's not one of us sitting up here who won't immediately call you back. I can say that for myself, I know. So don't ever hesitate to get in touch with us, and beat on the desk, and scream that things aren't right, and here's what I want to see that's wrong, you know, fix, that's wrong. So we're always available. And, and I hope tonight, we can get, as Commissioner Withington said, a couple of these issues, like the list and some of those things, start on the right road and get those fixed for you. It really, we really do care what, how this all impacts you. It, it's very important to us to have it be proper, then be transparent, and be fair. So we, we will try to get that done.
We have one more question, Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah, real fast, just thanks for coming in, I appreciate it. And you did bring up a good point. I, I picked up on it, and I forgot about it, the 24-hour rule. I agree with you. And I don't know how many people actually drop from the list because they don't respond within 24 hours, but if we're dropping people because they didn't respond within 24 hours, I don't like that. We got, I think we got to do a little bit more due diligence in, in trying to find out, hey, do you still want to slip or not? If you've been sitting on a list for a year, two, three, four years, we should allow them more than 24 hours to respond, and email, or phone call, or something. I think we need to figure out something with that.
Additionally, and something else I wanted to bring up, that I've also heard, and I don't know, because I don't have a slip, but if you miss a payment a day late, you are off the list.
You mean if you're already, if you're already renting a slip?
If you're renting a slip, and...
You're late on your payment, you get kicked out of the slip?
By a day, you're get kicked out, I've heard, so.
So if you miss by a day, you're kicked out of the slip?
You're out, yeah.
I want to confirm that. Is that true? Okay, we'll, we'll find out. He's talking, he's talking to his lawyer, he's afraid he's going to get handcuffed now. John, is that, is that true, John? Day late, you're out of the slip? They kick you out of the slip?
Sorry, sir. You get ready? Yes, and that was a result of lawsuit, meant several years back. Slip holders sued the county for various reasons, and because they were being kicked off docks for not paying on time. And that decision stood with courts.
Okay, so, so we, no grace period, you have to pay, and that's, that's a legal decision?
Let, let me address that. I mean, the court said that what was done at that time was legal. The policy certainly could be revisited.
Okay.
So I mean, there's a distinction there.
Yeah.
The court didn't say you have to do it this way.
Right.
The court said, what you did is legal. That's a difference. So that, that policies could certainly be revisited.
And I'm, and I'm certainly open to, I don't know, the rest of the commission, I'm certainly open to, to grace periods. I don't want to put a can of worms, but, I mean, come on. I mean, with every bill, there's a grace period, you know, and, and things happen, things just happen in life, where you don't get a payment out there, or something happens, you forget, or you, it gets, our postal service messes things up, like they've been known to do. I'd hate to see someone lose a boat slip because of that. You know, even with people with rent that have apartments, it's usually a three or five-day grace period or something. I know my daughter has, I think, a five-day grace period on her, her rent, this due the first very month, but I'd be, I'd be, I'd really encourage looking into something a little bit more forgiving, as far as, again, maybe that's something, if we put a committee together to see what's, what's the right thing to do there, I don't know, but. Yeah, we need to be more user-friendly, I think. See, that's bottom line, need to be more user-friendly. Not what's best for us, not what's easiest for us, what's more user-friendly for the people we serve? That's, that's where I'm going with this.
I understand.
Okay.
But like, back then, it got to a point, there was a grace period, and they were going to pass a grace period, or something like that, and they didn't get paid, so there's...
Yeah, no, I get that. We gave you a grace period, you go past a grace period, shame on you. But, yeah.
Administrator, I'm sure you're keeping a running list, so please, I, I think...
I need more.
Yeah. Need a bigger pad, I got it. But so that, I, I think what I'm hearing here from a lot of the comments so far is, the 24-hour reply needs to be addressed, and also the, the cover or not cover, as you say, you know, outdoor, indoor, dining. So that brings us to four items. So when we get finished with this discussion, I'm going to ask you to recite those back to us, so that we all understand where we're going, and that we can then sharpen any issues that we want to sharpen on that. With, did you have anything you wanted to add, sir? Okay, good. Commissioner Withington, you seek recognition?
Yeah, no, I was going to say the same thing. I think we should have a grace period, maybe, I don't know, a few days at least. I think it's pretty crazy to get, you know, get kicked out. But my question is, how are the, how's the, how is the, how do you, when the list opens up, how is that, do they, they call, or is it online, or what?
Well, the only one that we've had open up is sailboat, and that's what the gentleman's referring to.
Yeah, and so how's that?
So that was online, it was advertised online, there were sailboat slips available, and that's why it said wet, dry, mooring ball, so you could pick those. But it was specified, it was sailboat cove only.
Yeah, so is it a Google form, or what, what would it use for that?
It's tied to Civic Rec, I think it's a goo... Let me ask Megan, because she helped make it.
You know what it is?
It's tied in with the Civic Web, Rec site.
So I know, so Google Forms have settings that you can go in and edit your information, depending on what settings the creator of that form enables. So if somebody moved, or changed an email address, or changed a phone number, they could go in later on and edit their contact information? Does that form allow for that?
No.
No. So I'd like to see us look at, do I, oh, I think it says, I would like to see us look at maybe Google Forms or something that would allow us to do editing. But also, I know in the wintertime, you guys get kind of slow up there. Do you guys have anybody on staff that works their way through the list or anything, to call people and say, hey, we're just checking to make sure all your contact...
Yes, we do that during the winter, we do it throughout the year as well.
Okay, all right. Um, yeah, I would like to see us look at how we can kind of give them some ownership also, kind of like we expect people to, once a year, update their records if they move or whatever, with their personal property taxes. I'd like to see us figure out a way to put some ownership on the people, to make sure that they're making sure that their contact information is updated also. I don't know if we could send out like a reminder to them, to say, hey, log in and make sure your contact information, or something. I don't know, somehow we need to figure out a way to make them, give them some ownership on that also. But, yeah, I would like to definitely see...
We can do a bulk email and send out, hey, update your list.
But yeah, but yeah, I'm with you on that grace period. I think we, that's probably a whole nother discussion, but definitely want to see us work on that.
Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you. And first of all, John, I hope you're enjoying your marathon this evening. You have, you, you're doing well, so just want to recognize, you've been on your feet a bit tonight. So to, to one of the points, though, I guess regarding this grace period, just more of an observation than anything, you know, it, it seems to me, when the pressure for years and years and years has been, I'm, I'm on the waitlist, I want to get on and actually have a, a, a slip. It would seem to me, if, if that's what's been said over and over and over again, it's not necessarily a surprise to me to say that, okay, if I'm going to move the line, I got to make it somewhat restrictive, or semi-call unfair, because, you know, everyone's got pressuring me to, to open up an opportunity. So I, I do want to at least, I don't know if that's a devil's advocate position or whatever, but just to merely point out that, on the one hand, we're saying, people want docks, on the other hand, we're saying, well, you got to give people a chance, which I, I get, and I understand, I just want to make sure that we're reconciling both of those things, as we're, we're having that discussion. It, it does seem to me, though, that ultimately, you just got to have more supply. And, and so whether it is something that comes through in a discussion with a Park Master Plan, or whether there are ways for us to, to jump ahead, to even be discussing, well, how do you finance it? How are you prepared to do that? How, and, and then maybe the Park Master Plan gives you the where. But ultimately, you got a tug of war between people who want to have something, and then trying to provide good customer service to allow people who have it to keep it. But unless you affect supply, you're just, you're back here next year, and we're having the same conversation. So just, just really pointing that out. And if there are ways for us to accelerate that supply conversation, I think that is worth doing. But, but just wanting to point out that dichotomy. So again, thanks, John, for getting your steps in, and your exercise, your leg lifts, and all that in this evening.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Thank you. And I extend the thanks as well to the director, to John, I appreciate your work on this, and every day. To the point, I, I agree, the solution is a supply and demand solution, that's, you know, what I've been saying, certainly agree. I don't think the solution ought to be these sort of arbitrary, I don't think we should be parrying the list by having overly arbitrary rules about, well, you know, you didn't respond. So Commissioner Withington mentioned, as the Commissioner Johnson, sort of studying the issue further, I'm actually ready to make up my mind, so if, if you all are as well, I think we could add this to the list. Certainly think we ought to fix the, the, the 27 uncovered dock situation, that we're bumping people off, or making them pay for something they're not going to use. I think we ought to do that tonight. I'm comfortable with publishing the list, I think we've thought through that well enough, there aren't probably downsides to doing that, I think I'm good with that. On the issue of the 24 hours, or you're off, and you start your five-year sentence over again, I think we could leak system that to three days, and then we could do the same thing with the grace period on, if they've missed a payment, do a three-day grace period, that way it's three days, and keep it consistent. And I'm ready to support those changes this evening as well.
Commissioner Johnson.
I agree with Commissioner Carpenter. If we can do that tonight, can we do that tonight, or does it have to be agendized?
No, it doesn't. You, really, you're just giving us consensus. These are administrative policies that the Parks Department has implemented, so there's no formal resolution or ordinance that the commission would have to adopt. So if we have consensus by the commission to operational changes, then the director will take those back and start implementing those.
And one suggestion I have for the grace period, you know, let's say, for example, they're, they're normally due on the first, and we give them a grace period till the third or the fifth, whatever it is. My suggestion to prevent people from always going to the third or the fifth, or whatever we decide on, is, hey, it's due on the first, you have till the fifth, but if you pay any time between that grace period, there's a $10 late fee, or $20, whatever it is, just a, some nominal fee that just encourages people to pay on time. So you're, because there's some staff issues that goes with dealing with all the late fees as well, or all the late payments as well, I'm sure. So that, at least encourage people to pay by the first, or whatever the date is. At the same time, if they are late, there's a mistake, okay, so you're, you're $10. Whatever that, I don't know, whatever an appropriate fee would be. But, but that way, it discourages people from just always using that grace period, but it's actually for, hey, you know what? Something came up. Okay? That makes sense. That's just a suggestion, but...
And, and just for clarification, so if that is a consensus of the commission of including a late fee, then we'd have to be back to the commission to approve that, because the commission does approve all fees.
Okay, good point.
The other thing is, you've, you've made a really good point in that, is that how many people pay their, their property taxes on December 31st? And that runs us into a lot of problems. I think the idea of a late fee is an inducement, and it's, it's relatively nominal, as compared to the, the penalty for a property tax problem. So that's, it's nominal, but it, it gets the job done. I'm thinking, and then obviously we have to specify working days, business days, I'd be okay with five. I mean, the thing is, people are out of town, people are on vacation, people who would be taking advantage of this are going to be busy people. I mean, I don't have, I don't have a magic number, but I don't want to make it so close that the difference between one day and three days is, is something that I think is a little on the close side. But I could... that I think is a little on the close side. Uh, but I could, whatever, it, it would improve the situation. And I'm not looking for perfection. I'm just looking for better. Commissioner Jase, uh, Commissioner Withington, excuse me.
You can call me Commissioner Jason. It's okay.
I just want to show you the respect.
What was that, Jay?
Little Jay.
Little Jay.
I don't think I'm going to get away with that one.
Uh, what was it say? So I'll be the third one. Jay, John, me for consensus. Joanne, so that's four. So now we just need the other two, three.
Well, I think before, when we ask for consensus, what I'd like to do is to have the commission, uh, the administrator, we give those back so we're all in memories of fresh.
Yeah, so I was just going to say that I, uh, I agree. I'm good with three or five days, whatever. Uh, but I do like Commissioner Johnson's thing of a $10 late fee or something. But we can have that discussion later on. But I just want to make sure that we don't get held up on that tonight.
And if I could do a little bit of clarification, certainly I'd have the director weigh in. But they sign, um, our slip users sign a sort of a lease for the year.
Yeah.
And they pay in two installments. So these are not monthly.
Oh.
Right?
No.
So they've, they've sort of, right, correct. And so they've already signed an agreement for 2025, right? And so, um, do, when are the payments due? Because my thought would be this late fee may not need to take place until you adopt your 2026 fee schedule, and then we could put it in there. But John, please correct me if I'm wrong.
Correct. You can, lease payments are due to the 31st of December. You can either pay it all then, or you've got till April, or you can pay half and then pay the rest of the half by April 1st. So.
So this year's already in the case?
Yeah.
Right.
Uh, and one last thing. Once you get consensus from us, can you email or have Diana email all of us so we know that these action items have been taken care of?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, that is something that I think is important. Once the administrative actions have been formulated, um, certainly would like to have all commissioners aware of it so that it makes sure that it does reflect the consensus. So I don't want to be hanging over your shoulders, but on the other hand, I think this is enough of an issue to where I think all commissioners should be informed prior to implementation. So if there are any, um, miscommunications, we can have those taken care of as quickly as possible.
I was, I was, yeah, that's fine.
Oh, let me turn on your mic, Commissioner. There you go.
What Jerry said is fine, but I want to make sure that we're notified afterwards when, when it's, when it's, yeah, yeah, yeah.
My only request is to give me till next week after the holiday weekend. This is the big weekend. A little bit. All right. It will be done next week.
Mr. Director, I, I want to go back to the question I'd asked. Like I said, I didn't want to interrupt citizens, so I'm going to ask you this now, but I do want to go back before we conclude the discussion or before we establish consensus. I do want to go back and give citizens another bite at the apple here. So please proceed. The question was, is it possible to retrofit and to cover some of these slips or is that really an impracticality?
The only one that you have that you could cover would be H dock, but it's probably going to be, because Sailboat Cove, there's too many, they have masts, so you're not going to be able to cover them. There's too many different sized masts. H dock, you can do it, but I mean, we're going to have to look at our bank for a buck. Is it worth covering that or is it worth adding another dock? So it's just something we'll have to research.
And it, it was largely a rhetorical question to see if that alternative, if we decide to go forward with the idea of expanding our docks, if that would somehow help to alleviate the issue a little bit. So it's, like I say, I wanted to raise the issue, not necessarily come to a, a decision at, at the, in the immediate term.
Yeah. There's a lot more to it because there's, you know, the floats keep them up. You would have to probably add floats that hold more weight, um, add walkway. So yeah, possible, but we'd have to just see what the, what it, what it would cost.
I kind of assumed there was more to it than would meet the eye.
Yeah. There's a lot to them.
Um, any further comment? I'm sorry, did you have anything that you wanted to say before I go back to citizens?
No, sir.
Are there any more citizens who would like to come forward and make quest, uh, have make comments or have any questions? Um, certainly we, we are happy to hear from you. The, okay, so as, as we round off the discussion, and I have nobody on my board from the commission, uh, one of the things that I want to emphasize to citizens, not only those present, but those listening and whoever you talk to, we do want to hear from you. Um, there are various methods to get ahold of us. Uh, certainly, uh, phone calls, emails, whatever, uh, whatever method is you're most comfortable. Certainly contact us through staff as well. But do not hesitate to call us. Do not hesitate to contact us. We don't know, we can't know what we don't know. And so the information that you guys can give us, because you have the actual experience, even if, if I were to have a, if I were to have a boat out there, uh, you know, I might not have the same experience. So we couldn't go by just my experience. We have to go by the broader experience that our citizens are having. So we need to hear these comments. Um, I guess the other thing that I would mention to citizens is this is an effort to try to improve what we are doing with our slips. Uh, when we put together the changes that are contemplated, um, it's not going to solve all the problems. No, it, it's just not. Uh, so please be persistent. Please be somewhat patient with us. I realize you've already been very, very patient, but I guess maybe persistent more than patient because we're going to solve these problems as we can, but we will not be able to solve them all in one fell swoop. So just, you know, uh, be, uh, you know, be somebody we can call by name because we recognize you. It might be a good way to go. Uh, with that, um, what I'm going to do is I'm going to go ahead and ask, uh, the administrator to run over the list, make sure everybody has it fresh in their minds, and then I'm, I'm going to ask for consensus and then we will go from there. So administrator, please proceed.
Sure. Thank you. I'm going to take them one at a time. All right. So the first item is consensus by the commission to post on our website the current waiting list. Thumbs up.
I only have one question on that, and that is, we will not be, we will not be putting like information on there that would be intrusive. There's no emails.
There will be no addresses. There will be no, you know, other than a name, there will not be anything specific or sensitive to our residents or anyone on the list.
I suspected not, but I wanted to just say it for the, okay, so we have, of course you can. Go right ahead.
Yeah, even the suggestion is just first initial, last name. I don't even know if you need the whole name out there, just so people know.
Initially, whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, just to know that they're real people that are attached to it. I think it's kind of what we're looking for. Okay, I think we have consensus on that point. See head nods. Number two?
The second item is with regard to the policy that if we have an opening and we contact the next name on the list, if they decline to take, especially if they decline to take an uncovered slip, it does not remove them from the list. Right?
I see all head nods.
But then we'll go down to the next list until we find someone who might be willing to and interested into taking the uncovered slip. Okay. The third item has to do with us contacting an individual on the list when an opening occurs. The current policy has been if they do not respond to us in a 24-hour period, then we take it as sort of non-responsive. It is the commission's desire to expand that beyond 24 hours to give three days.
Well, hey, does, uh, does anybody, I, I, and please suggest numbers to us on that because I, I didn't hear a specific number, but certainly we were in extending the time.
Yeah. And, and I would remind the commission, you know, our parks office is open 24, basically seven days a week, right? Um, especially so I know we had talked about business days.
That's true.
Um, but again, by granting it to three days, that, you know, they, they can certainly get back to us on a weekend, um, you know, if it's in that three-day period if they're working. So that does allow some more flexibility.
Yes, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Wagner.
I'll accept Commissioner what's his name as well. Um, the, uh, um, I, I'll say the three days is fine, but one of the things that I also heard was the consistency of, I'll, I'll term it this way, the consistency of knowledge among staff that are present. So that if an inquiry comes, doesn't matter who's there, they're able to be responsive to that inquiry or to provide that. So, so I'll, I'll put that proviso on that.
No, I would agree with you. We did hear that from our residents saying, depends on who you got. And we do hire a lot of seasoned staff.
Absolutely.
To, to run it. And so we knew, it sounds like we need to do a better due diligence and training of our staff.
So I mean, just, just the fact that the information is available, so it doesn't matter who you talk to.
Right.
They can respond and have that consistency of information. I think if you got that, then that's good by me.
Um, and so consensus on that, I think, right?
I believe so.
So then the two items I'm going to group together because I don't think they're, they are necessarily for now. And that would be the grace period, adding, you know, three days of a grace period for a late payment and possibly adding a $10 late fee if you pay during that grace period. Since the 2025 period has occurred already and, because they were due by April, I, we really wouldn't be encountering any of that in 2025. But we've made a note of it. And so as we come forward in 2026 and talk about the fee structure and what the policy is, then those, those changes would be implemented. The second thing I heard, um, was making sure and trying to find a, an ability that when we do open up the waiting list to add individuals that can sign up for the waiting list, making sure how do we communicate it? And once we do that, the form that they use, how do we create the form? So as Commissioner Withington said, can they go back in and update whether they've changed their phone number or their email address, um, so that when they do get contacted by us, we have the most current information and they have the ability to fix that. If we can't do that, then we're going to continue our practice of our staff trying to be proactive and reaching out to them to say, is this still the current information? And are you still interested in being on the list?
I do have one question on that. The waiting list, does that generally include both phone number and email addresses?
Yes.
Because what occurs to me is that if an email address changes, I, I had mine change about six or eight months ago, and it certainly disrupts things, people that you don't contact, but maybe once a year. But having the fallback of using the phone number as well kind of helps to mitigate that circumstance. I just wanted to double check.
We can probably figure out something that does text message or something, bulk email or bulk text message.
And then the last item is to, when these are implemented, the list is live. Um, we'll change the policy and educated our staff. We'll send the communication out to the commission so you know that those things have occurred.
Looks like all head nods also. Oh, scared. Uh, Commissioner Wagner? There we go.
Uh, I agree with everything on that list, um, but I did not want to lose sight of the request earlier for the scope on the, um, on the comprehensive plan, uh, if we can get that. And then a thought does occur to me, kind of as a later piece, I feel like if you find that no one wants to take the chair at the bar, then that tells me there is no market for the bar. And which then tells me that, um, and I know you've answered this a couple of ways, but it does suggest to me that then it makes a whole lot of sense to replace the H dock. Because if nobody wants it and they're just using it as a placeholder to get the one that they really want, then you might as well just replace H dock and we can build a plan of finance around that. Um, but, but that's, that's probably, once you start seeing what kind of feedback you get, then that begins to tell a story that suggests an action. So I'll just throw that one out there, too.
I agree. Follow what the market is telling us. Uh, one citizen, would you like to make further comments, sir?
Yeah.
And go ahead and re-identify yourselves because we have just audio recordings also.
Mark Crochstrom, Smithville. Um, so at the, at the risk of being a pain in the neck, I only show up for these things like once every 10 years, so bear with me. Um, the H dock policy really isn't getting taken care of because it can still be bought and used as a way onto the list. Why that's offensive is for somebody that's making $70,000, that's a huge deal. For somebody that's making $300,000, that's just a way to get on the list faster. So you're basically telling lower-income people.
Uh, a moment, sir. Commissioner Johnson.
So one way that that's being addressed is we're allowing people that are currently on the list to, uh, say, no, I don't want H dock or an uncovered dock. I want to stand my position on the list and wait for a covered dock to come on. So that, so from here in the future, that's being fixed. To your point, people that are there now, I don't, I don't know how we can fix that.
Yeah, people that show up next year that say, I'll, I'll take an H dock spot.
Well, if they.
Are going to have an advantage over anybody else that's wanting a slip.
But they won't, uh, they won't.
Actually, he is correct in the aspect that if somebody H dock now or H dock in the future, the first thing we do is everybody gets to renew your space and get the slip you want.
That's right.
But if we have movement, then if we have a vacancy, then we open that up to everybody saying, does anybody want to move? Right? So relocation. So those individuals that are in the H dock will still get an opportunity to move.
Yeah.
And take a slip. And then the dust settles and we know exactly what we have at the end.
And as we get through this list, then, uh, unless, do you have a better suggestion on how we should handle that?
I think a big win needs to come by and just take H dock away. I don't think anybody in their right mind would rebuild it. Nobody uses it.
Could you speak more into the microphone, please? I was having trouble.
Nobody uses H dock, um, except for people that might want to come in and use it for the day. Um, but it could be used to get on the list and be asked to upgrade from there. There was a question I kind of had, and maybe it's part of the rules or how you guys do things. If I've got a 25-foot boat and only a 25-foot slip is available, or you guys have a 12-foot slip available, you're not going to call me and offer me that 12-foot slip and then boot me off the list for having a 25-foot boat, are you?
No, if this is what the commission's wanting to do, then we'll have to do it by size.
Well, I guess I'm asking how much we have built right now?
Right now, it's H dock or you're off the list.
Well, okay.
Would you come up and, and use the mic? That way we can all hear you.
I'm talking about a separate issue, like for the people that have got a 25-foot boat. You guys wouldn't call those people and say, hey, we've got a 12-foot, uh, slip open. Do you want it? My answer would be no. Would I be off the list?
At this, yes, on this, where we're, as of right now. But they're recommending to change that to.
That, I mean, you see the obvious problem there? That, that would sit on the list for three years and they call you with a non, non-bible subscription and then you're off. That's crazy. And I have one other issue.
Come right on up.
Sorry. Um, that may have been a, the, the different, the different size boat ask. You know, if I've got a larger boat, not being asked for a 12-foot slip to use and getting bumped off the, oh, I, yeah, there was another, there was another topic. The, uh, issue of keeping the list at 100 people is, I don't think that's a good option. I think you should just put people on the list until you're done putting people on the list. And it shrinks and grows naturally. Otherwise, I think what's happening, certainly from my point of view, I would see, see the list at 100 people all the time and just get frustrated and say, never mind, I'm done with the lake. And I think that's where a lot of people are. They're just done out of frustration. So I think the list should go back to whatever number it is and then you call people when appropriate. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Wagner.
Uh, thank you. Um, so it's the last point. I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I see a clear advantage between what we're currently doing and having a list that's 869 people long. To me, you get kind of the same result no matter what you do. Uh, again, it goes back to supply. If I change supply, I can, I can, I can deal with that. However, I would say, and I think it was to the, I think, I guess she's gone now, the lady who stepped up before, to me, that, that 100-person list works if you know when you add to it and you can see when it's added to. Uh, because if there's that issue of consistency that we've talked about before, then you create a consistent timeframe when you can get on the list, um, and when you can see that there's actual space there. That, that's, that's my, that's my feeling on, 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 on that particular piece. Um, I do. on that particular piece. I do understand the, the issue that was brought up, and I can, I can see that. I, it reminds me of a saying I use very often, which is the enemy of the good is perfect. And I'm not sure there's perfect lurking in the marinas of Smithville Lake. But I would say that at the end of the day, there's something that's got to be done with H-doc, because either someone is manipulating the system by using a space, or those who could actually use a space can't use it because it is uncovered. So I guess I'd go back to my, my earlier comment of, if at the end of the day, H-doc is a problem, then I think we do need to create some plan of finance to go deal with it and not, not fix it, but replace it. If, if what I'm hearing is consistently, H-doc doesn't work for a number of different reasons. And if, and if we can assume for a moment that what we're going to probably get, and this may be a leap, but if I were to assume for a moment that whatever we get out of our, our parks plan is going to be, H-doc doesn't work, you really need to replace it, then you might as well figure out how to replace it now, which I would assume would have, would be based on revenue. And although there's existing revenue there, then there's probably, well, I won't figure it out tonight. I'll leave that to you. But, but it does seem to me if H, if, if H is going to be a problem no matter what, then you might as well just do something about it. And that's kind of where I would, would land. And whether that needs to be added on a list of things for you or not, that just is my observation based even on the, the comment that was just made. And once again, thank you for being here tonight. And you're not a pain in the neck as far as I'm concerned. You're offering some pretty good stuff, and I appreciate the conversation that, that you've helped us do tonight.
Commissioner Whittington?
Yeah, no, I was going to ask if we could add to the list that we don't wait until the Parkmaster Plan, that we start looking at a, how to, you know, what we can do for H-doc, how we can replace it, maybe even get some pricing so we can possibly add it to the coming year's budget. I think that needs to be fixed ASAP. And as far as the boat sizes go, if somebody has a 25-foot boat, and we only have a 12-foot slip, and you call them and there's just no way that they can use it, I don't think they should be punished and taken off the list. I don't know how everybody else feels. I see them all nodding their head. So I would, kind of like Jay said, indoor, outdoor, first available. If he has a 25-foot boat and there's only a 12-foot slip, you go to the next person until the 25-slip, but he should, somebody should not be punished or lose their place or anything because it doesn't work for him.
We're going to have three lists.
Commissioner Director, turn on your mic, please. Thank you.
Sorry. We'll keep a list with sizes and all that, and we'll determine it then.
And so there's a couple of things with that, because I agree. But I think, too, the comment that was made by our resident saying, hey, you know, we're at the dock and we're hearing somebody who said, hey, I just got on the waiting list and now, and now I have a slip, but I've been on a long time. So be prepared, because that will happen, right? You know, because we can't control which size of dock becomes open. And so somebody who just joined, who said, I want to take a 12-foot because my boat will fit there, they may be, get in very quickly, where somebody who wants the larger one, they may be on longer. So I'm just, you know, those things will come into play. And to Commissioner Whittington's about looking at H-doc and what to do, the director's already started looking at, that's why he had some preliminary numbers about what would it cost to build a new dock and additional. So we are going to continue to pursue what that looks like. And so you may see some things in the capital requests for the '26 budget, based on what we find, whether H-doc is replaced, whether you, we could add on to existing docks that are short, to add some slips on to those. So we'll look at all of those as we move forward.
Yeah, that's, that's all I had. Thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you, yes. So glad to get clarity on, on those things. Obviously, the expanding capacity piece is a longer, you know, month, three-years-long conversation, and so it'll be important to have, but we're not going to solve that tonight. But I do want to solve the gentleman's point about creating an avenue through which people can pay the $1,000 or whatever the H-doc amount is, so that they have an advantage and sort of jump the list. I don't, I think we ought to resolve that this evening as well. In my view, you just do two different lists. You have one list for covered docks, one list for uncovered docks, and you can't transfer from uncovered into covered. And, you know, make that real clear to the people if they want the covered dock. And to Commissioner Wagner's point, there may not be much demand for the list for the uncovered dock, and that frankly will be telling. So I think we ought to do two lists. I get that, you know, there's another line on the spreadsheet, but I think we ought to do it. And then that way they can't jump ahead of the line by, you know, having the transfer option given to them instead of the, you know, people on the list.
Okay.
Does that make sense? If it doesn't, I'm happy to talk more about it.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I think we're getting, we may be getting into more of a micromanaging kind of a thing. I think it's good to raise that suggestion. Yeah, because we're not, I think we should have the staff who are more familiar with the policy.
Well, respectfully, strongly disagree. You're welcome to your view on that, certainly. The gentleman pointed out that under our new regime that we just created this evening, in an attempt to fix the problem, that we didn't fix that one last part of the problem, which is that people would have the ability to get the H-doc and then would be given the transfer option ahead of people who are on the list. I think we ought to resolve that this evening. I think it's well within our capability of, of doing so. I don't, certainly I don't want to micromanage, but if you feel like that's a thing we can do, I think it's a thing we ought to do to, to make the system as fair as possible. And I'm glad we're solving this, these problems tonight. I think clearly we've not been doing this in the optimal fashion for some time, and we're making some improvements this evening. I think that's a good thing that we're doing it. And I appreciate Commissioner Whittington for bringing the issue up and y'all for working on it.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, I agree. I think this is great where government's being responsive to the needs of the community. Imagine that. But I think ultimately to Commissioner Wagner's position, if we just cover them all, that fixes a lot of issues. But the two-list thing, I like that idea. The only question or issue I see is the people that are currently in the uncovered, who are there knowing that they purchased those or leasing those, with the idea that they're going to have first, first, first route of refusal for the covered one. So it's how, how we dare deal with the fairness of those people who are already there. I don't know the solution off the top of my head, but that's, that's one of my concerns.
Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. And I'll echo that. My imperfect suggestion is folks signed up under a current regime and expectation, right? So it's, it's hard, even if, if ultimately unfair for the reasons that have been given, that now you're going to, you're going to change that. I would probably recommend, because of that, that that's probably a 2026, as opposed to a 2025, perhaps. But I also wonder, based on some of the conversation that's occurred earlier this evening, if, if they've only been purchased so that they can, if you'll pardon the term, leap the line, then that should be very clear. If you go there today and there's no one in those slips, right? So I get it, and, and I think there's a timing for that based on the comment that Commissioner Johnson just said. I think it's very telling how fast you implement that regime based on what you see in the slips. And I may be getting too far in the weeds, but it just strikes me based on the earlier comments and conversation.
Did you, you okay? Okay. Commissioner Carpenter, did you also, okay, I thought I saw you on the screen.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, so of course, so those folks are people whose name on the list already came up, right? So that's how they got H-doc in the first place, right? They already rose to the top of the list. So of course, those folks should have the ability to transfer to, you know, a covered dock at the first available option in the order in which they entered the H-doc money squeeze. So definitely they should be able to do that. I think we ought to be able to, since they've already come up, they've already come to the top of the list, I think we ought to be able to protect their status at top of the list while implementing, going forward, the, the change in which we no longer have the ability for people to jump the line by being willing to pay the extra fee. I think we ought to do all of these things at the same time, so as to not have a, a system in which there is still unfairness. And I think we probably can do it. If, if the director feels like we can't, then certainly, you know, I would be grateful for you to tell us that. But if we can, then, then I think that's my view, is that we ought to fix the problem tonight.
I don't see an issue with doing the list. My suggestion is we'll get H-doc relocated next year when they put in their relocations, and we'll study what the cost of replacing H-doc is going to be and not put anybody else on it until we get those figures done.
Any further comments, questions? Do you feel, administrator, you have the information you require to go forward?
I think so. John, do you?
I've got it.
So if there are no other comments, we'll go ahead and close the discussion. I see none. So we will close the discussion, and that will bring us to county administrator comments. Thank you, Director, and thank you, citizens.
Just a quick reminder that county offices will be closed on Monday in observation of Memorial Day, and the commission's next meeting is next Thursday, May 29th, at 6:00 here in the chambers.
Thank you. That brings us to commissioner comments. Commissioner Whittington, we'll start with you, please.
Just want to tell everybody, Happy Memorial Day, and hopefully you guys enjoy your day off.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yeah, I had a bunch of stuff, but I'm just going to say one thing. In, thinking about the time. We're talking about needing money. I got a great way to get it. We have right-of-way all over this county. And today, if I wanted to bring a fiber optic line up my road, if I were a telephone company, I wouldn't have to pay a damn penny to do it. All I'd have to do is make sure that everybody's line was marked so I wouldn't cut any facilities, and then go on and do it. In other places, I'll give you a good example, is Liberty. If I want to put a line on Liberty, there is a fee, correct, to bring that line up. And it's, do you remember what it is? Every so many feet, it's X number of dollars.
Yeah, I don't know how much.
Yeah. So, so it's a great revenue source. These people who are bringing those lines up know that it's going to be at expense to bring it up, and a lot of municipalities do this kind of thing. And I don't see why, I know we can't enact anything tonight, but it's a thought about starting to get this done ASAP. That would bring in a lot of revenue that we're not getting, and start saying, you want to bring the line up the road, that's great. It's going to cost you this many dollars for this many feet. And in the interim, I will find out from some of these other places exactly what they call, charge, and then we can visit it again and see if we can make some money and build some docks. That's all I got, except for happy, happy Memorial Day, whatever it is, for everybody. Just a day off. What a great day.
Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Happy Memorial Day. Be safe in your travels. And if you want to do a staycation, we have many lovely, lovely venues in Clay County that would love your visit and your dollars. Did I do okay, Megan?
Fantastic.
Fantastic. But also for those who have sacrificed, thank you for your sacrifice.
Commissioner Johnson?
Nothing.
Commissioner Thompson? Commissioner Carpenter? I'm sorry, no, okay. I would agree. Certainly, everybody should understand why we have these holidays. They're not just for days off, but they, they are supposed to commemorate significant parts of our history. Certainly travel safely. I hope everyone is able to be with family and friends and to enjoy this time, while keeping in mind, of course, the reason that we are doing that. Megan, give me the email address, or the, the address for our, because Commissioner Wagner is correct about staycations. So give us the website, because we got to let our folks know where, where they can go to find these things.
Okay. Megan Soffield, Tourism Manager. You need to go to visitclaymo.com. Find all the events and places to stay there.
And I was, I was at a, I had some opening remarks at the clerks and the elected election officials convention earlier this week. And that was one of the things my, and thank you for the talking points, about two-thirds of my remarks were, go to this restaurant, go to here, go to there, go to see this, go to see that. So I was a bit more of a travelogue than a, than a welcome to Clay County. But we do make, we need to make sure that people are aware of those assets we have. And one of the biggest ones we were just talking about, and that is our lake and our recreational opportunities there. So certainly, we would encourage both citizens and visitors to take advantage of those assets that we have because it's a good time, and it's a good time to do it. So with that, we are adjourned.